Mr. Merrill Bay.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercio.
Here.
Dr. Violet Jimenez Sims.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dorries.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
He's excused.
Mr. Joseph Hysgro.
Here.
Ms. Annie Carter.
Excused.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Conley.
Here.
Ms. Tina Santiano.
Here.
Okay, we have a call and let's take a moment to quiet meditation here to gather our thoughts. Okay, and do we have anyone for public participation?
Currently I see a phone number that ends in 52.
First news on the phone at the number that ends 52, you want to unmute yourself and tell us whether you're calling in for public participation? You may need to hit star six to unmute.
I think they're unmuted. I've heard some noise.
Okay.
They just, they just left the meeting.
Okay.
Nick, is that me, Fox working? Is just saying they can hardly hear us?
Um, I don't know if it's.
It's yellow. Looks like it's yellowish red.
Speakers gotta get off.
All right, audio problems with the live feed, solved hopefully.
We do have someone who's called in with a last, with digits ending in four or five.
Okay, there's somebody on the phone with the final digits four or five, if you're calling in for public participation, you could please identify yourself.
I'm me by hitting star six.
Anybody there?
Yep, they're talking.
Yeah.
We can hear them far, far away.
Hold on one second.
One second.
We're trying to make it louder.
Okay, try now.
Nope.
Nope, give me a second.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sure. Always mic.
We're trying to hear. It's not that we don't watch, but.
Okay, give it one more try for us.
How about now?
It's not working.
Barely.
Speak when we're down.
Okay, so you can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Kathleen. I am a parent of three students in the consolidated school district of New Britain. One is a fourth grader, the other is a second grader, and my third is a preschooler. I wanted to call in to voice my opinion in regards to the dress code, if that's all right.
Yes, please go ahead.
Sure.
Okay, I think the children at these ages, I understand the proposed dress code in order to change it is mostly in regards having had these restrictions for the children that are in 3K through grade five. I believe those children are at an age where the only thing that they have that they control is their self-expression, and I believe that they should be able to express themselves through the clothing choices that they make, and I firmly do not believe that these cause distractions in the classroom. And furthermore, the survey that was sent out, will we, was the, was the survey sent out through the power school or through the phone calling?
Power school, I think.
Power school.
Okay, when you go, if you go back and look at that, because I reread it, and it seems kind of confusing the way that the survey has been sent out, because it starts out with a question referring to how the policy has changed, and then the blanketed question is in regards to the policy, but it doesn't specifically state which policy you're referring to, the one that was let up, and meaning how it is progressing during the COVID lockdown, or if it was specifically referring to the uniforms. So I believe more clarification would be needed on that. And then I believe the results of this survey was probably looking to get different, because every single parent that I've spoken to, and again, I have three children in all different grades, every parent that I've spoken to goes the same way that I do, that the children should be able to make their own decisions for that. The parts kids these days, they can't, their parents or guardian decides everything for them. They don't get to decide what they eat, where they go, what they do, anything like that. The only thing that they could have is the choice of what it is that they would like to wear, what shows their personality, because otherwise they can't pick that. The high schoolers get choose the delicates they want to go to. The younger kids don't, they have nothing. And that's all I would like to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you repeat your name?
My name is Kathleen. My last name is Ziaik, Z-Z-I-A-B-I-K. My children share similar names, as well as one shares a different last name.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
And they send to different schools as well. You were either with.
Wait, wait, wait. Hers was an email that we received.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, so she was just rereading that, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
Thank you.
Oh, that's crazy.
Oh, much better.
Magic.
It's got much better sound to me than the other.
Um, that was the one that ended in four or five. I do not see any other phone calls or any other people who've called in.
Yeah, though we've had a number of people who've sent emails to us.
Yes.
Can we put those into the record as well for public comment, or how does this work?
Um, yeah, we can definitely forward those on to Kristin to have those included.
Would you also like Facebook messages and anything else that goes along with that, or just the emails?
It seems like emails addressed to the Board of Ed because somebody can't attend a meeting are a little bit more formal than a post on social media.
No, I mean, like Facebook messages.
Facebook messages, if you want to forward them.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other public comment? Don't see any other numbers.
I don't see any other numbers.
Okay, we will close public participation and move on to new business. Do we have executive session as well? Are we doing that first, or are we doing that after? Because I know we have a lawyer on hold.
Yeah.
Going this by a minute, so.
Well, they have the votes taken good up.
So do we want to?
Item B.
A motion to move, to move item two B to the head of our current agenda discussion of pending legal matter.
Second.
Okay. All right, so we are going into executive session. What do we need?
We need to.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we need to make a motion, but I want to make sure we have the right people.
No, no.
No, on moving.
Oh, moving, oh, yes, okay.
Second.
We have a seconded motion to move item B and new business up. This is not a debatable one, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so.
Motion to go into executive session for discussion of a pending legal matter. Our attorney is waiting in there. We'll also include Ms. Sarah.
Ms. Kane.
Mr. Kane.
And Ms. Manning.
And Ms. Manning.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is 7:03 and we are coming back out of executive session. The next item on our agenda is appointment of new administrator.
Yeah, we have to be your cheering crowd, too. I know you probably left your son and your husband at home. I recommend that the board approve Ms. Diane Leia to as assistant principal for Jefferson Elementary School. Diane has been, been with us, explored new, new paths in strengthening her instructional coaching for about eight years, Diane? Was it about eight years that you left us?
Uh, yeah, seven years.
And then she came home. Good choice. And she came back in last year as an instructional coach, honing her craft, I would say, over the last 10 years, and seamlessly is just going to step into her role as assistant principal to support Jefferson students and partner with Dr. Lewis. I, I, I'm just going to anecdotally say, I, I think I met Diane, I don't even know how many years ago, very long time ago. We were teaching across the hall from one another, and we're both very loud. So, but, but just her presence in the classroom, her commitment to New Britain kids, seeing her with teach, with students then, and with adults now, I'm pleased to, to bring her name forward tonight as assistant principal.
A motion to approve Ms. Diane Lehrer as the new assistant principal of Jefferson Elementary School.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a quick question, only because it says it's a newly created position, grant-funded.
Mm-hmm.
Did Jefferson, I know there's a rule of thumb that says if you have 350 kids.
Five hundred.
Five hundred. I don't know, I just knew there was a rule. So we're at 500 at Jefferson, or do we just need to bring in that assistant principal?
So, so, that was a, a rule that was a man-made rule. I don't think it was.
I don't know.
I don't think it was in stone.
Okay.
But it was kind of a guiding, guiding number, I believe the former superintendent crafted. And, and for us with, with, you know, knowing that our, our it is about helping our teachers improve practice, Jefferson has never had a second administrator there. Dr. Lewis could use the support. I mean, he's certainly instructional, Diane is too. When we talk about, and Marielle will talk to you a little bit later, about our teacher evaluation, when it's around really coaching, not, not just doing evaluations to have them done. It requires conversations and dialogue and being in classrooms. And it's really hard for any leader to be alone in a building and to expect them to be able to handle all the instructional, as well as operational or managerial. The only person holding out is Ms. Booker at Northend. We haven't, we can't seem, that's a really small, itsy-bitsy building, so we're supporting her in other ways. But the numbers are always, they waver, right? They're up, they're down, and some, you know, some years one's lower, but I think it's good practice that we have dual administrators of buildings to service kids and.
But when do we say grant? Is it S R, like these are these two to five years?
Well, and you know, I'm gonna, I'll talk Kevin speak, right? And, you know, because we have so much more entitlement grants now, even through the alliance with the additional millions, you know, that were promised to us to start balancing out the funding, you know, we've been fortunate enough to be able to hire, retain hires through those alliance dollars. That's a grant fund, but it's more of an entitlement grant, so that doesn't go away.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Can I just say?
Yes.
One thing. I'll drop my mask down later on so that way she can sees, see my face. But actually, she had worked with us, and I'm speaking to parent engagement, when we had at Smith, and it was so funny, because I looked at her face and I went, no, I can't see from over here down, but from over here up, it looks like she used to work with us in Savager's office, and I thought it was just phenomenal, so don't get me wrong, part of me was like, yes! Thank you. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, uh, extensions? No, congratulations.
Annie is on. Annie was just talking.
Yes.
Okay.
She was Mark Dapson.
Ms. Leia, would you like to come and, and just receive congratulations from board members? And if you'd like to say a few words, that'd be awesome, too.
Yes, I would.
Well, yeah, we'll do the bump. We won't.
Can I do this for a second?
Yeah.
So thank you again. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and continue to serve not only New Britain, Board of Ed, but the children and the parents who are so dear. This is, this is my city. So I'm so happy to just continue the work that we've set forth, especially with this coming year, and to really dive into really helping out Dr. Lewis at Jefferson and really move forward some of the things that even the board has put in place since last year with new policies and so forth. So I really appreciate this, and I was talking with Mr. Foran, how I started my career as a para in kindergarten, and his daughter was in the classroom. And I just love the fact that, you know, here's an immigrant child of immigrants in New Britain, and I've started as a para, and I'm moving on to administrative work and still supporting everyone here in New Britain. So I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for this opportunity.
Thank you. Oh. I know, but listen, I'm.
We're huggers. I know, it's been years.
This is so weird.
Something's up our ear.
Careful of the course.
Thank you.
And I have to give Kristin, too, because she's amazing.
Yes.
A motion to move item four C to next on the agenda, since we have guests from other than board members here.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor of moving the school resource officer item up on the agenda so we don't have to keep, keep you here forever?
Aye.
All in aye? Okay, thank you.
Kristin, do you have the slide? I don't know where to look.
I know.
Where am I gonna, where are we gonna?
We're gonna be able to. It's gonna present to all of them, I believe.
Okay. I feel like I'm staring, staring at Sandra Sanford, even though I.
Yeah, even with glasses.
And he can zoom in on it.
Can you close the presentation?
I don't know.
If you, yes.
And he can go from, there we go.
There we go.
That's about it, that's.
We're good? Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. This is, presentation is a continuation of a discussion that we've had here before the board last year around SROs and the issuance of summons to students at New Britain High School. And what the chief and I would like to do is, is present the plan going forward in order to address the concern, the appropriate concern that members of the board have raised and members of the high school have brought forward as well. And so we're going to do this in two ways. One, we're going to describe the, the process that's in place at the high school, and then the next slide, when appropriate, we'll go to it. And that's our best guess of what it would look like using the last full year of data that we have, right? Just so that you would be able to contrast the differences in the data that you've seen that's presented to you from Donna Swaby in those earlier meetings, to where we would anticipate that this would end up next year. So, I'm going to start with describing the student support decision tree that's there in front of you. It's at the top, because I like to point to boards and I can't do that, because it's all behind you. But if you look there, it starts at the very top there, where you have your student action. And a student engages in a behavior, and that's typically resolved, resolved three different ways. One, on your left there, the green area, is that a referral might be written to an administrator or a dean, and that's resolved there. Then, all the way over on your right, in the blue area, and we're not really going to address that particular process here tonight, but that's the cohort meeting, and those are for students who's, who persistently engage in a behavior or a series of behaviors that are really contributing to a lack of success in school and really need a much higher level of support from the school, and that's in the SRBI process. So really, and this is where most of the interaction with the SROs happens at the high school, is in that, that area in the middle there, that's kind of that yellowish tinge there. And, and what those are, are, those are behaviors that are, that need immediate attention from staff members in the school, and those fall under a wide umbrella of behaviors. And so what we have at the high school is a system, we call it the administrator on call. So there'll be one admin on call every day. Everybody knows who that administrator is, and if there's a matter that's urgent that requires immediate attention, that administrator will be notified. And that administrator will assess the situation, and then, as you can see there, there are three different areas typically where these students would be diverted to or, or sent to in order to resolve the matter. The first one over there, where it says admin or social worker referral, that's if it's an issue, and I'm going to speak very generally here, as I go through this session in general, I'm kind of make up scenarios, because I want to be very careful in a public meeting that I don't give an example that might potentially embarrass a student. So I'm going to speak very generally there. I hope that's, that's sufficient for here. But let's just say in that first area there, you've got a student who might be maybe engaging into profanity, looking very visibly upset in the hall, might even be, maybe punching a locker or something like that. So that's, that's going to be behavior that would get the attention, obviously, of staff members, something that needs immediate attention. So you, you look into that, and if the admin on call determines, hey, well, that's a student who might just, had, had something happen at home, or is responding to an issue of personal matter, you would send that to a social worker or an administrator, perhaps even maybe a counselor if they've got a good rapport with them, for resolution, right? Let's, let's make sure that this is taken care of. The second area there, this is a new program that's going to be up and running for the first time this year. That's the Student Assistance Center. And while we don't have complete data on this, we know that that's where the vast majority of students who interact with the SROs and receive the summons, that happens because of conflict. And students engaging in conflict, we've created this new support center, the Students Assistance Center, and that's intended to be a diversion where you can send students who engage in conflict so that the matter is going to be resolved. And just a little bit about the Student Assistance Center, borrowed the idea from East Hartford High School. They actually, it's a model that they actually was so successful, the, the principal at the time, Dr. Stephen Edwoods, actually with the others, you know, they published a book on it. And it's really about getting to the root cause of conflict and making sure that skills, students leave with the skills necessary to navigate and resolve those conflicts. It involves mediation. It's led at our school by a certified school counselor, Gino Aiella. Peer mediation is a big component of it, engaging students in that positive role model for, for the students who are in the program, who are actually leading the peer mediation. But also, students are sometimes able to relate to other students in ways that perhaps adults have a little bit of difficulty. So harnessing the, the power of student voice in order to resolve these conflicts is, is a, is a critical component of that. And then the last area, and this is really where the chief needs to speak, I'll just wait till the image is back up there.
I don't think Annie knows. I don't think Annie knows that we're just staring at her. Annie just wanted. She wanted to say she had nothing to report.
Yeah, right? All the way to last year.
Oh, yeah.
So in the last area there, is where the school resource officer comes in, and the chief can speak more to this area than I. But this is, there are some areas where by statute or by law, we do have to at least involve the SROs, because it might be effectively of a criminal nature. And I'm gonna, I, I can't speak to what those are, so I'm going to actually turn it over to the chief here to discuss about areas that we would have to bring to the, to the attention of the police in the building. All right, good evening. So just to try to keep this as, as simple as possible, there are certain areas where the, the SROs have to be involved. With a criminal act that does occur, say the conflict resulted in some type of serious injury, a weapon was involved, a threat of a weapon was involved, the SRO has to get involved in, to that matter. If an arrest is requested to be made, whether it's by staff administration or a parent, the SRO has to get involved. But even if those, those types of incidents occur, requests are made for an arrest, we still have the ability, in some cases, to make discretion. In most cases, we do. There will be some things, if it's a domestic, or if, again, if it's something that has to do with a weapon, we're going to have to make that arrest. But other than that, we can make, have that discretion. If an arrest is made, it's, it's issuing a juvenile summons. I think there's a lot of misconception of what a juvenile summons is. So if a crime is committed, arrest has to be made, or a request from a parent or, or staff is, is requested to be made, they're issued a juvenile summons. So we first have the discretion of the, the officer, second, we have the juvenile summons. The juvenile summon is issued to the parent or guardian, as well as the student, and then that case is reviewed by a supervisor in our Criminal Investigations Division. At that point, it's determined, where is this going to go next? Is this a repeat offender? Is this a first-time offender? What is the history of the family? What is the involvement with DCF? What is the involvement in other social services? If it's deemed that this is a low-level offense, not a repeat offender, it's going to be sent to the Juvenile Review Board, which is operated out of City Hall, and that's operated by Omar McDue. If it's sent there, most of the time, that's going to be counseling, that's going to be maybe some type of letter of apology, or something very low-level kind of interaction. If it's sent, it's determined, because this is a repeat offender and it's sent to juvenile court, most of those times, that's boomeranged back to us, to the Juvenile Review Board, because the juvenile court is only really interested in dealing with violent crimes. If it sticks with the juvenile court, potentially the resolution be, besides getting back to the Juvenile Review Board, most of the time, it's sent to some type of probation. The other misconception, under the age of, of 18 years old, any of these juvenile summons is issued, do not show up on their record. They're gone. As soon as they turn 18, it's gone, unless they've committed a serious juvenile offense that is later transferred to adult court. Now, if it's transferred to adult court, now you're looking at a very violent crime. I could tell you, we've arrested juveniles with firearms, committed robberies, they're 16, 17 years old, and they still are not transferred to any type of adult court. They're absolutely vanished from the record by the time they turn 18. So if it's a low level, which most of the crime that we're dealing with, if a juvenile summons is issued, if it's sent to juvenile court, is, is usually, almost all the time, erased from the record. That means nobody can get access to it. No potential employer can get access to it. Nobody from the community can get access to it. It's gone.
It's gone. So, all that, you have discretion at the SRO level, you have discretion, before we even get to the SRO level, you have discretion at the administrative level, discretion at the SRO level, discretion of what's going to happen with the juvenile summons at our supervisor level after everything's reviewed, discretion of what's going to happen at the Juvenile Review Board if it goes there, discretion if it goes to juvenile court, and usually sent right back to us. So I think there's just a lot of misconceptions about what happens with that. Almost every single juvenile summons issued in the data that was presented to you was based on a request from school administration. And a small amount of that was from a parent or an adult, other than that. Because again, if you do have a crime that, an assault or a fight or something, and a parent comes to us and they're demanding, I want an arrest made, probable cause exists that we can make that arrest. And depending on the discretion of where we are, we lie with that, we might have to make that arrest. And that, that's another reason why, why those juvenile summons has occurred.
Very small in number.
Very small.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Where's the breakdown in communication then because that's not the information we heard last time?
Then perhaps I didn't express it, but I have tried to clearly indicate in our earlier meetings, is that this was a systems, it was a systems issue at the high school that permitted the situation to get there. And I can give you a, I can go over timeline on how that came to my attention in my current tenure as principal. But before I do, I would like to just address one other area over there under the School Resource Officer. And that is, there's two little offshoots from School Resource Officer. One says resolution, that's if the admin on call, if the behavior is such that it requires a resolution. But also, and this is absolutely critical to understand, is that there are many times that students come to us with a need that requires the support of the School Resource Officer. Again, I can't give you specific details without potentially, you know, embarrassing or strutting on confidentiality. But there are times when, typically, it's a social worker, a counselor or administrator in their interaction with a student, discover that something bad has happened to the student, typically out in the community. And the police have to get involved at that level.
So most of those, I've talked to our current resource officers as well as previous ones. And I know firsthand, a lot of times, if they're victims of crimes, child abuse, child sex abuse, or if they're at home and they're seeing one of their siblings or parents being abused, this is one of the avenues that they use to report that types of crime because they're not at home, the police aren't coming to their house, they're here, you know, they're at the school building away from that environment, and they feel more comfortable talking to an officer that they see every single day.
Right. And that's the tremendous resource for us as a building, is that when we find out those types of situations, it's literally a walkie-talkie call, Officer Durco, we'll say, are you available? Can we, can we work with you on this? And having, and the School Resource Officers have a higher level of training to interact?
That is correct. So they, every School Resource Officer has to attend what's called the NASRO. It's the National Association of School Resource Officers. It's a forty-hour training block with continuing education following. And basically, they're taught like a triangle approach to this job. They're either going to play the role of a teacher, a counselor or a police officer, and they're constantly moving around in that triangle of trying to deal with a student. So they're, they're taught different levels of identifying behavioral issues, mental health issues, especially for children or young adults. They're looking at the ability to mentor, de-escalation techniques, conflict resolution techniques, more advanced than a regular patrol officers are because since they're immersed in that environment. And I think, talking to them and also presenting, which I did talk to our School Resource Officers, you had asked me, they have popped into classes and done Q and As because I guess certain teachers are always asking, hey, I have a question about a certain law, or how certain, how the police work, or how investigations work, or a clarification of some law that came out, and they pop in there and they present. So they also have that ability. But that advanced training really assists of being immersed in that environment.
How are SROs chosen? Who's chosen to be SROs?
So ultimately, it's my decision. So we have a selection process. So every four years, we keep all of our assignments in that, to a four-year assignment because what we like to do is get an officer involved in the SRO, leave, go back out onto the, to the street and interact, now they're adults. And now they're seeing the same people they had interactions with every single day, they're now seeing out, out on the street, and they're actually helping them in that environment, which the bonds in the, you know, the relationships built are really invaluable. So the selection process comes up every four years. Anybody who's put out to the, to the department, anybody who's interested submits that to us. We definitely look at all different things. We look at what training they've had so far. What's their work history like with our department? Do they have any prior employment, such as being an educator prior to? What is their education level like? We could be as strict as we want. We want to see how citizens' complaints, have they had any citizens' complaints against them? Any disciplinary issue? What is their attendance like? So we basically see what our resumes are, we put them through a interview process, meet with our commanders. Our commanders have unanimously agreed to send me the recommendation of saying, this is the best of the best that we have, and these are the ones that we're going to select.
Can I correct this data to those who have been residents or moved off in the city?
Listen, I would love for them to be New Britain High graduates. I mean, that would be absolutely phenomenal to put them right back in there. Unfortunately, sometimes, my, all of my New Britain officers are in special assignments already, which is testament to, you know, the quality of people that are, that are on our job. But I would love that. I would love to have Spanish-speaking, I'd love to have Polish-speaking, and I would love to have any police officer that speaks a Middle Eastern language. I still have nobody, I need somebody, but if I could get that, that definitely would give some type of preference.
This is going to sound like a really stupid question because that's the first time I've been meeting you. Are you Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Okay, I have no clue. No, 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 that's, my name is Tina Santana. You wouldn't see me until tomorrow with my nephew, but I, you just didn't look like Mr. Ayala, who was the one that was in the meeting that we had with, with Donna Swaby. So I'm like, wow, this is kind of messed up. Good evening. So my question for you is this, when you speak to the students, they too also capture that saying, we are happy to have the police here? Like that they have really good rapport with the police there in your command? I'm sorry, shoot officers that are right there in the police. I'm guessing you speak to the students, are they happy with the police staying there?
So we did, we did have a survey. Only thirty-six students responded. And that was because of the pandemic, and we anticipated that, right? So that doesn't mean we're not, we're going to stop our attempts to solicit student voice. I could go on for another hour about student voice, anytime you'd like to. Because I think it's an overlooked resource in and of itself, right? Involving students in the decision-making and helping guide the building forward is, like I said, we don't have an hour, but invite me back, I'll give you an hour's worth. But so, so only thirty-six did. Of that, the majority, seventy-some odd percent were in favor and supportive of the SROs in the building. But again, that's just such a small flock.
That's what I know, right?
You can't, you can't really make any decisions.
That's, oh, no, no, but part of the engagement is to continue to ask them, hey, listen, and I'm happy that they're happy. And then just out of curiosity, when you got over here to this side, the Student Resource Officer and the resolution and the support that you just went into, so who is the actual Student Resource Officer?
So we have two?
Yep.
Okay, so the actual Student Resource Officer is the one that actually controls, his would be this like right over here, Mr. Ayala would be the one over here at the Student Assistance Center.
Yes, at the Student Assistance Center, right.
The administrator, who's the one that has the walkie-talkie for the day, that's the person that's right over here.
Well, no, the dark orange one on the top is the admin on call. And the admin on call is the one that will divert the student to the resource and the support that's required depending upon the situation.
Gotcha. So it's whoever is on duty over here that's able to be able to say, all right, listen, I'm going to be able to help you and kind of kick in the overdrive, the students that are right over here, and then whoever they divert it to. Now we got you.
And we can show you some numbers on the next slide, but just, just a second yet, which, so what I did is I looked at our numbers from the last full year that we had data, which was nineteen twenty, the year of the closure. So I had data up through March thirteenth, and tried to extrapolate what it would look like if that were this year, and what would the outcomes be in terms of numbers and where students would land. But before we do, I'd like to get back to Dr. Sims' question about how did this, essentially, how did this come to pass, right? And so, my first year here as principal was, I've got to get these numbers right, eighteen, nineteen, that was the first school year. And that was an assessment year for me. I was, I was coming back to the building, I'd been there before, but in many ways, it was a brand-new building. And so at the end of the year, that year, I recognized, as you all do now, that this, that the summons and the interaction was significant and needed to be addressed. You know, hindsight's twenty-twenty. Looking back on that, I would have made the, the avocation for starting the Student Assistance Center then. I had already started having conversations with Ms. Ayala, and I think I might have mentioned it to some other folks, but I didn't put a full-throated force behind it. The following year, nineteen twenty, we had some significant issues in November of that school year that really brought the whole issue of student conflict to the forefront in a very, very in-your-face manner. At that point in time, I brought up the Student Assistance Center with the superintendent, and she was immediately supportive of it. So we started at that point in time, November, December of, that was nineteen nineteen, going into the twenty school year, of laying the groundwork. Indeed, so much so that Gino Ayala, who's now the counselor leading it, was able to take students involved in some of those critical incidents and pilot, well, how do you communicate at home with this? How do you work with the kids? How do you set up? It's not just come in, you know, fix up the kids and send them on. It's something, for, for teaching kids how to resolve conflict, it's something that you actually have to engage in a cycle. And he actually developed a six-week cycle in which kids who are involved in conflict come back in over repeatedly, again, working together to make sure that they have the tools necessary to no longer engage in that conflict, to help them resolve it. My hindsight, Monday Morning Quarterbacking would be, I had wished at the end of my first year, I had made the advocacy for a program that I had recognized was needed at the time. Now, so we started putting that in in nineteen twenty, and then we closed in March last year. Obviously, it was the year of the closure, it was a very unique year, year in terms of students actually coming into the building. So the good news is that we've had time to really prepare the Student Assistance Center. Ms. Ayala was able to still engage and identify some students to go through some initial peer mediation training. A brilliant thing here also is Ms. Ayala had time to really establish relationship with our outside partners and community stakeholders who also support our students. So it actually, I think, helped develop his capacity to really, to move this forward. And additionally, also, the superintendent supported the additional, the addition of three more BSAs. So Ms. Ayala will be overseeing the department, and there will be four BSAs there, able to be assigned to two students as a caseload, to try and make sure that they have those skills to equip them for success in the school.
So my question wasn't so much about how that Student Assistance Center came about because I know we've been hearing about this, but more as, this is sort of the new going forward. I'm talking about, and the recent data we heard, it sounded like, and I have heard from at least one administrator at the high school, that there wasn't that full control from the administrator on call, and the School Resource Officer could and did sometimes offer, give students summons without the request of an administrator or anyone else. They made that call themselves. In fact, at times when an administrator specifically said, I would rather do not, and I'm dealing with this. So that was the issue that came up in that last presentation with the data where we saw that over forty percent of the students in the nineteen twenty school year were students with disabilities, and that that year, even though we shut down, the number of summons was actually pretty large.
Yes, and that was as a result of those three critical incidents which involved all of them multiple students. So that's why those numbers.
But the connection of the admin on call to, you know, sort of tree.
Right. So it's a systems thing. And this is what I said before, is that the reason those numbers were so large, it's a systems failure. So it's about putting the right systems in place to make sure that we don't have a repeat. So clearly articulating this, I've also set up weekly meetings, starting the first week of school, with School Resource Officers, all admin, Ms. Ayala, and the deans of students, everybody who's involved, and Jesse Johnson, who's the manager of security. So everybody who's potentially involved in that process is all on the same page in that we can assess the system and make sure that it's working appropriately.
I do have to share that, and I got the same feeling when we were, and I was just listening because that was one of the first contacts that I had had with Donna Swaby with regards to making her presentation, because it really sounded almost like the officers were targeting students as opposed to responding and trying to mediate and trying to resolve in a healthy, positive, I mean, I don't know, just to hear the words, they're targeting the Black and Brown students and arresting all the disabled, and I'm like, no, 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 that can't possibly be it. I've never, I, no. I appreciate your taking the time out to clarify it, but I heard the same thing too, like it was that the officers were targeting. And I know that they're not, I know that they're not. But that's the way, that's the way I heard it during that same presentation with Donna Swaby. So just going forward.
And I would say, I didn't hear the target, but I did hear that it wasn't necessarily an admin saying, or a parent saying, arrest, it was the officer saying, I'm going to arrest you because it's an arrest. Not necessarily a target thing, but.
Right, and then the data was the data.
And then the data was the data.
Disproportionality, like we can want to believe whatever we want to believe about where it's stemming, but there is disproportionality, which is an issue.
Yeah, absolutely it is. Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had Nick. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you. I just want to say, like, I think part of the issue and part of the reason this came forward the board, and part of the reason this has been an issue that's come up multiple times in my time on the board, issues around the interview rooms, things like this, it comes up. And I think there is, at least in part, it's, there is image issues. And I think it's important to get better feedback from the students too, because if seventy percent of our students are having great positive experiences, that's good, but that means thirty, thirty percent aren't. And that's not a small number of our students who maybe don't have a positive experience. And I think part of the bigger issue that some people talk about too is this, these interactions have the potential for setting a tone with students who later go on and become adults. And one of the concerns that I think people have voiced and raised is that students who have negative interactions with the police in their formative years, elementary school, middle school, high school, go on to be adults who, you know, may not have the best view of the police, may end up having negative interactions with the police there. So even if the summons go away, even if those are, those parts of the records go away, that negative stigma is possibly still there. And so that's, that's just something, I, I love this idea of having this tiered, multi-layered support. I think this is a great model. I want to make sure that however this is rolled out and how it's implemented, that this is what our students and our families and the community also feel is what's going on. I think having, I mean, you're making a very good case for the need, right? Having people who are trusted officers that students can go to is a fantastic, that is a very positive thing that could come from this. But that only works if the students believe that's what they're there for, if they trust in that they can go to them with these problems. So that, I think, is an important part of this. Like, can we make it so that it's not seventy percent of the students, and again, who knows what it'll be when we're able to actually get a better sample, but, you know, eighty, ninety, ninety-five percent of students who feel that this is a positive impact on the school system.
And just to agree with Nick, because I wasn't aware that a survey had gone out, but I really would like to see surveys or even focus groups of our students, but I'd like to see an effort bringing in some of those children who, whose parents aren't, you know, PTA presidents, or they're not honor roll students, kids who might feel disenfranchised and are more likely to be, you know, involved in these type of activities. You know, I would like to see more of the, more children that are not typically as involved to be, you know.
I agree. That one of my concerns about putting out a survey was, especially when it was online, was that the students who are more likely to respond to an online survey, we're going to be missing the real members of the high school community whose voice we really do need to hear. So, and that's why, I don't know if you saw me perk up when you said focus groups, because surveys are one instrument, but nothing tells you more than sitting down and working with students and really just listening to what they have to say, gathering that, and then coding it in a way that can really lead you to some real outcomes, resolutions, and then give you a path forward.
Can I just say this, just because I see that you guys also have what was unique to now versus when I graduated in ninety-five, was we didn't have a public safety, like an actual division of New Britain High School that addressed, that tracked actual students in that, you know what I mean, like in that direction. And for me, it was always really healthy and positive to see models of that right there with. right there within the school community. Not like we're here to be police, we're here so that you can see, you can do it too, and how can I help you, and be mentors in a way that's unique, that you would not be able to see in some other districts and some other areas. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, we're trying to just make sure that as adults, we're trying to have that and be that positive model. And, you know, listen, we fly under the radar, right? We're just going to work doing what we gotta do, have no contact with the police outside of, you know, whatever, saying hi at an event. But to actually have it right there at the high school and be able to say, listen, I'm right here and I'm here to help you. And that's just, I think it's an asset. And we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot, and we said, no, we don't need the cops there. They're not here to do anything.
So it's interesting, you said mentor, the deputy chief was trying to, the pandemic.
Yeah, started a mentorship program. But to go to your point, I've been heavily involved in the hiring process for our police department for the past ten years. The most common response when asked, why did you want to become a police officer? Was they reference their SRO and their school, whether they're a New Britain High graduate or whatever other high school they came from. And I think it's really important, especially in the city environment, is that seeing that, hey, look, here's a police officer. I don't have somebody in my family that was a police officer, but I see this, this role model every single day for my four years in high school. You know, I want to be like that person. And we, we get a lot of positive feedback, to your point.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's something, don't get me wrong, you know, near and dear to my heart, but just in that way, we're, you know, we all know my education. So, you know, I just sit there and I go, but you're right there, and you're able to say, listen, hey, look, what's the best form of flattery that they say to you, hey, I want to become a cop because you were good, and you were good to me. And that's just wonderful, that you're right there. So I thank you for that, I really do, and thank you.
Yes, do you want to look at the other, other, the next slide? And so what I did here is we, we took the twenty nineteen, twenty school data, and this goes through March thirteenth. But this is the last school year that we had full data. And so anticipating with the structure that we have now, here's where we would, where students, where they would fall on the support continuum. So the, the top part that's in blue, that actually should be green, that, those are the referrals. So that's a referral to a dean or administrator for class cuts, those types of infractions. And so when you get down to the, the ones underneath that, those are the ones that the administrator on call would typically respond to. And so I looked at the different codes that were in there, because that's all I have are the codes that are in, that the, that the dean or the admin puts in, into, into Power School. And of, of those ones that would come across the admin on call over the course of that time span, three hundred and seventeen, so it's roughly in half, three hundred and seventeen as social worker or administrator would, would mediate and resolve. And three hundred and thirty-eight of those would go directly to the Student Assistance Center for resolution. Of, of that, seven, I could only identify seven that I thought at the time that I prepared this would need to come to the SRO's attention. But I learned, talking to the chief, that number might actually be six, because if it's a school fire alarm, if somebody threw a pool of school fire alarm, that is not something that would necessarily need to go to the SRO. But that is something that the school administration would be able to handle, depending on the severity of the situation. So that's the path forward. That's what I would, and I, you know, next year's going to, or this upcoming year is going to be this upcoming year. It's, it's impossible to say it would exactly replicate that. But looking at the data, that's what I would anticipate that we would see when I come back and report to you in, probably be in the school year, in May or June.
Maybe December, September is going to be, September, October, November, right? Everybody's coming back. That's quarterly, we come back.
Well, we're going to come back quarterly, but at the end of the year, the summary, the total, sorry. I apologize, yes. Quarterly you'll come in, but that, that's what I would anticipate.
Either, either Mr. Pierce or Chief Shu, if one of you could possibly email me, like where it says as required by statute, just what the statutes are for that, that refers to, because that'd be helpful when we're trying to draft policy and things like that, if we have those on the hand.
I could, I could tell you it'd be a domestic situation, where we're, we're bound by state law. Second would be a weapon, threat of a weapon. So you're talking a knife, a firearm, or, you know, whether it's discharged or used in a crime or threatened. Not saying I'm going to stab you and not have the knife, they have to have it in their possession. Those would be the two. Then, if it's going to happen, would be some type of risk of injury to a, to a child type charge, where we would be forced to make an arrest on that. Other than that, discretion applies.
And if he had a chance at some point just to send me the statute that that comes through, so I can make sure to cite it when we're looking at.
Sure.
Can you look into that request? I'm just curious, I'm curious about the statute myself.
Any further questions? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to have Sandra, Marianna, if that's okay.
Actually.
Oh, sorry, you have to do that.
We're going back to three A, because we skipped out. So technically, the next item is three A.
So for the superintendent update, always there's, there's a lot. I did, I did update everyone in July. It was quite comprehensive, gave you a rundown about each department, and this is similar. But I do want to, I am going to read part of the facilities, because I think it's important that the public know this. And I'm going to take my mask off if you're okay for just a minute. So our summer work, the work that we do over the summer, and this is a facilities departments, the buildings are cleaned and ready for the staff and students. The extra focus this summer was to clean rooms top to bottom, clean and scrub bathrooms, ceramic tiles, clean stairs and stairwells. Exterior beautification began and will continue. Large shrubs and old baseball field fencing were removed from Roosevelt and Smith. And I did send you pictures in the July update that I sent you, just on how it looked at Roosevelt with the new, with the absence of the shrubs. And large shrubs and old baseball field fencing were removed from Roosevelt and Smith. Also shrub, overgrowth, and small tree removal is completed at Dilo Polaski and Gaffney. And this has been ongoing for our middle school and high school, so we have that continuum. Vertical alignment for six through twelve, as far, as far as manufacturing goes. Machines are in the rooms, dust collection systems have been installed. And that has to only be done when kids are not enrolled in. Final punch list items are being completed now.
Sorry, Annie says there's no sound.
Oh, did someone bump the thing?
I wonder who it could be.
That might be an issue on Annie's.
Well, Jeff says it's, sound is working fine.
Yeah, that may be an issue on Annie's end. I'll type back to her.
She's really reliable.
She's on vacation.
Okay. As far as Chamberlain, the Chamberlain Project and Pope John Paul. Chamberlain Construction began their environmental remediation and demolition phase, that's begun. At Pope John Paul, it's in the process of being set up now. Teachers are expected to be back in on August twenty-fifth. They're doing some last-minute things. There, we did purchase, as, as we promised, twelve commercial dehumidification systems. They were installed at the lower level, and that replaces just some of the standard, small kind of home type. And we were down there touring there, and it, it was fine. There was, I mean, usually you can smell, there was nothing, I mean, but they, they had a, they had these running twenty-four seven. The entrance hall hallway had a partial asbestos, asbestos tile abatement, so when you walked in the door, there was a carpet there that they did pull up, but they had abatement done. An air quality test was completed, there were no issues found as far as air quality goes. All reports completed with results will be available for review in the main office of that school. The school is networked and Wi-Fi is operational. Projectors and boards are on site, and they are currently being installed. So as far as moving the teachers in, furniture's already been moved, the, the company moved them. I know that there's extra furniture and stuff in the gymnasium now that will be removed also soon. Teachers were just kind of going through it to make sure there was nothing they wanted. And where we should be ready to go, it's not the prettiest, but it certainly is very functional and safe. So I wanted to let you know that. And again, hard at work at COVID. And just really, we are ready for our first Wednesday night parent forum. There will be this Wednesday, next Wednesday, and the following. We'll probably schedule more, but I'm going to wait and see where we are. Usually things start to settle in a bit by then. I'm still meeting every Tuesday morning, myself, Mike, Jackie, Maddie, Kevin Dion with the Department of Public Health at the state level, as well as the State Department of Education, offering us guidance. And it's still kind of loose there, right? And so they're still making decisions, and I wouldn't want to be them. So I, we're patiently waiting. But what we've presented, even today, we were back in there revising some of it. It's a live document, so people going in have to keep reading. Not much has changed, we were just changing some of the language. I did get some feedback from one family saying, we really want more on, you know, the sanitization of the building. So I added a section in there today on that, based on feedback that I got from families.
Oh, a quick question, the Wednesday night forum is at what time?
Four o'clock. So it's at four, goes to five. It will be recorded though, because we understand families can't all get there. The plan has also been translated and is available in Arabic and Spanish for our families.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure that at least when you're putting in there that you're recording it, that they put some, I don't care if you put it like a sign, put it with a sign. If you have any questions, make sure that you send them in, so that way we're not just, you know, counting out the people that have questions about it and not able to ask. And they're like, oh my God, it already happened, now I can't ask anything.
Right, right, that they can still ask. Right, understood. And you can read through, I mean, not that every department's not important, but I wanted to just kind of hit the high leverage points. You know, we, we have made some moves in central registration. We have a new manager in central registration, Ms. Noémia Ramirez, who is there now. Ms. Daisy Sanchez took a position at New Britain High School in the partnership office.
I know, she didn't go anywhere.
No, she didn't, she just moved over. And so she's kind of mirroring what Myra Rodriguez does at the building, at the city, I can't even think, district level. And she'll be doing that, and Damon didn't, wasn't able to get that involved. But we do have community presence in the high school this year. They're actually creating a space on the cafeteria floor where community providers can go hang, and, and just so our kids can see the people in the community in the building as well. So Daisy's there, traffic controller, she's the go-to person, and they'll be contacting her. Hiring update, this has been a, and I, I have to give kudos to the town office, and I know sometimes we don't give them kudos every day, we keep saying why it's taking so long. And we don't mean that, but the processing is just intense with the amount of hires. As of May one, we have offered employment to two hundred fifteen non-certified and one hundred twenty certified.
Wow, did you say two hundred fifteen?
Yep, two fifteen and twenty. So we still have, we still have fifty-one certified vacancies. Twenty of those are brand-new positions. So if we were looking at it from last year, all I'm saying is, it, it's, it's a little tough because we're all in this war across the state. And so we think we secure a position, and then someone says, I'll give you this much more, and you know, throw a car into boot. And so we start to, and again, not that we may not be guilty of it ourselves, right? But it just becomes that kind of tug-of-war. So that's where we're at, it's not from, all summer long, people have been interviewing, interviewing and interviewing.
Does that mean we have thirty classes where we won't have teachers?
Does that mean we'll have thirty? No, I would say no, and I can give you a better breakdown of that. As you recall, we, we included, I'm guestimating, between our ELs and our special education, we, we had about another twenty-five new positions. And while we need them, they're not classroom teachers. I believe there are no classroom openings except for maybe middle school. I know Ms. Robles just recently had a slew of new hires. But I can get you that information down to the.
And these also, I could just.
Yeah, sure.
This fifty-one doesn't include the people who are in process or in the hopper, if you will, who are being processed, being onboarded as we speak. So we do anticipate that number going down at the end of September. And it also reflects a slight uptick, there is a trend of people who resign in August, intending to be certified staff because they have accepted jobs in other schools. We didn't have a slew, but we do have a certain number that can happen every August. These people have accepted jobs in other schools.
I do want to point out too that our Wellness Committee does meet, it's, and actually, Mr. Olisko is on the Wellness Committee with me. But one of the kind of nice things will be, we have developed a halal menu for the opening of the school year for our Middle Eastern families. We have new menu options too. And I have to say, Stephanie Noto, working in, she is the consultant. That's coming out of our food service funds, but she's working in concert with Ann Alfonso. But Stephanie has her eye on, on actual health wellness, where Anne's is more overlooking finance. So we're happy to have her on board. I know they've been out already to the sites looking at, you know, just, just the cleanliness, and if we're, we're following code, et cetera. We have, we have very large turnout at summer programming. We just finished that up on Friday. So, but I will say, at the high school level, we had about four hundred students, and of those, overall, about six hundred students earned credit over the two sessions. We had twenty-four seniors graduate from the first session, and seventeen students graduate from the second session. So that was at the high school level. We maintained about eighty percent of our students in pre-K. Pre-K was, was our first year with Jump Start. We had fifty littles over at Dillaretto. A lot of our new, a lot of our teachers who are going through their certification in principalship, they are, those are the ones that actually take over the buildings with oversight by Ms. Wright, myself, Mr. Foren. And just, it's an apprentice, it's a time for them to learn how to be an administrator, et cetera, and actually walk the walk. What we did notice, and not really a surprise, but we need to, we need to be able to hire, we should be hiring more social workers and school psychologists during the summer months as well, just to be able to support all kids at their level. You know, we did, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a year. And I think that we are as ready as we can be with, with, you know, really partnering with CMHJ, CHC, Klingberg. But, but I still think that we have to be flexible going into the school year. Teachers have to just be okay with, let's just focus on helping kids learn how to be back, and that sort of thing. And I'm, if there's something that you want me to speak to directly, I, I don't want to take too much time, because I know we've got two more presentations. I'm trying to be mindful of that, Ms. Sarah Caroline, sorry. And that is, that is about what I'm going to go through for tonight. That's okay. Any questions?
No questions.
Just one question on school meals.
Sure.
Are they, we're going to continue to serve in classroom, is that correct?
So that's, it's, it's, it's going to differ by building, because it depends on the, the physical structure of the building. We do know that while students are unmasked, we want to maintain at least a three-foot social distance. At the elementary level, most building admins will be having the kids eating a combination of, some students in the cafeteria, and probably rotating some kids through, you know, so everyone gets an opportunity to eat in there, maybe once a month or whatever. But there will, then there will be kids in the classrooms. At the middle schools, again, depending on schedules, they will still be able to put some students in classrooms as well. The high school is a challenge, right? That's not going to be a place where we can have them. So as best we can, we're going to cohort the students in the cafeteria, and I don't mean we're going to give them assigned seats, but they typically tend to gravitate to the same group of friends, most days anyway, just getting a snapshot. We do have cameras, so if we ever had to contact trace, we can go back to look and see where students were sitting. So that's, that's my best answer. And again, we'll be using the tents up until we can't use the tents any longer, right?
So is, are there picnic tables or anything out there, or how are?
In the tents, they, they will put tables out there, like hard tables, not picnic tables, but something like that, so students can sit. Our, and our message too, I met with the admins on Friday morning, we met with them, you know, it's to get the kids in quickly, especially the, and not that the littles can eat quickly. Sometimes if there's an orange, it grows your day, because they can't kill those darn things. But, you know, that kind of thing, get them in as quickly as possible, get them outside.
Can I just, just a quick question, more of a personal thing. My son has a medical condition where we were having some challenges and have throughout, just being able to find out what the kids are going to be eating. So when it was clearly before COVID, and we already had kind of like a guide for what they were going to have during this, you know, like during that particular month, okay, this is the focus on bananas, whatever it is.
Right.
But now they just totally get like random food, and he's having like a free-for-all, which leads to more hospitalizations. Go to San Antonio. So going forward, now that we're getting better at this, how do I find out what he is going to be eating ahead of time? Because the other thing was that the nurse was never the same and the part about, hey, he's got a condition called G6PD deficiency that he couldn't be, and they give him fruit salad, and he's not supposed to eat blueberries, but he's eating them because he's like, "Whoa, this is so good."
So we, we, for COVID, we did post, we always had our calendar posted. It went home to families, usually hard copy. We also posted on our website. So you should have availability, and I'll just double-check with Anne tomorrow and let you know.
Yeah, how do they just be, and my son isn't the only one that has it. You know, oddly enough, it's a condition that runs through a lot of Hispanic community. But not only that, but just, you know, even other ones that may have, you know, nut allergy is something everybody talks about.
Sure. Well, I think every student loves to know what they're having because then they can either say to their person they're living with, "Do you make me something?" or "I won't eat today." You know, it depends. But we're hoping the guy knew it so much better that everyone's like, "Wow, great food."
Yeah, but if there's something, just tell me how I'd be able to access it. And the other thing, too, is like that hand-in-hand with the medical staff on site. So that way, they too would know. Because anytime I would even ask, hey, did you even know what they were serving today? So that I can get a read on what to report to the doctor. And they're like, "Nope, have no clue. I'm just tapping." So if there is any way, just to be able to say, you know, hey, listen, can I? Just ahead of time. I greatly appreciate it. And I could share that information, too, with any families that I also know that have some challenges with that.
I think we do post, yes, okay.
And that was feedback we received in wellness committee because there should be easier ways for parents to access menus virtually, online.
Yep.
Rather than just like the piece of paper posted in the cafeteria or sent home with the kids.
And it's crumpled up in the backpack?
Yeah.
Oh, no, it wasn't even coming home. And then I was like, "Anybody know? Maybe this is because of blueberries."
During COVID?
Oh.
During COVID, I think we just had a lot of like, okay.
Packard's jerky.
We have enough of.
Listen, my kid would have, my other one was like, "We have cheese sticks." That was like, his hot thing was cheese sticks. And I'm like, "Ooh, okay, hot stuff."
High school, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's move on to our next.
Would it be okay, too, if Ms. Sanford went next and followed?
Yep, let's do that.
Jeff put something in the comments, as we're going to begin this conversation. Jeff, at the top of, Jeff Proko put something in the.
That there is a link on resource section of the webpage. So there is a link currently on the webpage.
Link on resource?
Yeah, so there's a resource section on the webpage, and there's a link to fdmealplanner.com, which apparently has.
So maybe we can come up with a way to make that more prominent.
Yep. Well, you know, they should already know when there's a kid that's got some sort of food allergies. With mine, I have to keep reminding them, hey, listen, but, you know, it's tied hand-in-hand to other stuff. So a couple of them have that challenge of my four. So that's where I was being vigilant, and no one could ever tell me where. So even through the end of the school year, no one could ever tell, like, what do you know? Oh, well, it just comes in a bag. Okay.
So we're going to work on figuring that out.
So he said it was a link in the resource page, and it was called the FD Meal Planner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to look for that. Thank you.
Okay, so, Sandra Sanford?
Yep, Ms. Sanford? Oh.
There you are.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Hello?
Will you hear you?
You can hear you.
Hello, how is everyone doing? Can I present, or Kristen, will you be presenting your presentation? Is it okay if I just share? It's only 30 slides. I'll talk as fast as I can.
She's joking, yeah.
Yep.
Go for it. Make it 35. While she's presenting, I just wanted her to give you an update. As I stated earlier, when we put the first ARP plan together, the ESR plan, things are moving and shifting, right? And so we had money. We wanted to make sure we're spending it the best way. So what Sandra's going to present tonight is just to show you what the updates are to the additions, the additional money that we're spending.
All right, so I wanted to give a quick, a quick review of what we've done in the past back in June. I'm not going to read the slide entirely, but I wanted to bring to the forefront a review of what we've done in June and July that we presented. So tonight is talking about ESR 1, ESR 2, and ARP, and some of the changes that we have identified based on a needs assessment or trial practicing over the summer. So as a review, a few years ago, we got, we received ESR 1, which was primarily focused on the digital divide. Then a year later came into ESR 2, which was the four priorities that identified academic support, family and community connections, school safety, and remote learning, also to develop or decrease the digital divide. This is just an overarching review. Then along came here American Rescue Plan, the ARP, which was somewhat a combination of ESR 1, ESR 2, and it means ESR 3 with five main priorities. Priority one, learning and acceleration, academic renewal and student enrichment. Priority two, family and community connections, excuse me. Priority three, social, emotional, and mental health. Priority four, strategic use of technology, staff development. And priority five, building safe and healthy schools. Some of the things that we did notice is what I'm presenting in this slide, and actually, there's only three slides, not 30. So, but I'd be glad to share with you some of the changes that we have identified based upon our needs assessment and what some of these updates are thus far. We are fortunate that it is not, the state is allowing us to modify the grant as we see things going since it's two years, and we can make recommendations along the way. So I'll start with the first one, first and fourth month. This is preschool full day. We are converting, I should say, we're adding two full-day pre-K. One is a brand-new converted from two half-days into one full day. And another one is brand-new for a smaller integrated environment. And this isn't changing our slats, but what it is doing is it's creating a smaller environment in hopes that our four- or five-year-olds that kind of missed the pre-K experience may be able to have a full-day experience and catch them up. So, and that is linked to priority one. The second piece, also to do with pre-K, is Superintendent mentioned earlier about our out-of-school time over the summer and for next summer, is to continue with our pre-K Jump Start program. So our summer program will now include a combination of working with our providers at the YN and our staff in the building to provide an opportunity for our pre-K learners, both of which are priority one. The second two changes from the updates are based on priority two, family and community connections. I do want to say overall that some of these new items overlap from more than one priority, but you just have to put the higher, the most relevant priority, but they do intertwine between many of them. So priority two, there is a need for having bilingual communication specialists that are Arabic. We are noticing more and more struggles with our Arabic population, and our abilities to communicate are two-way with them. So the impact of having a bilingual communication specialist. The second piece, excuse me, is our out-of-time supports for the high school, at the high school level. It was also brought up, we've done a great amount of work KE with our extended-day learning, our Level Up and our enrichment period. So in this, in this partnership, we are partnering with Ready CT, which is the old CBA out of Hartford, to ensure that more of our students have the opportunity for working, career connections, compensated opportunity, I should say. And the next two priorities are social, emotional, and mental health. We have started some work with CHNA, and we'd like to continue that work and increase our case managers with that work. So more of our students and our families can have supports, especially with the onset of school and a face-to-face environment. And the next thing was already mentioned this evening, already tonight, so it's a little bit of a recap. But increasing our staff, our BSA staff at the Student Assistance Center at New Britain High School to support, is one of the things that Mr. Pierce has spoken about, as well as Superintendent talking about our summer program, how great it was, but identifying that we do need some support for additional social workers and SEO during summer programming.
Thank you, Sandra.
I have an update for now.
Okay. Questions about this?
I don't think priority three is going to become priority one. It's just a way, listen, I know you're on the ground, we agree. We agree. If I was to make a pie chart there, you'll see. We have a lot going toward that.
So are we taking steps to actually address that gap and that need for the social workers at the high school level? Well, really, they're needed at all levels, I'm just being honest.
Right.
So what are we doing in order to be able to? And I just heard her say the strengthening the partnership with CMHA, and I was part of that plan when they first started. So I get that part of it, but what else are we doing for the gap there?
So again, one, our partnerships bring to us additional counseling support, right? So actual people. And so we have that partnership with CMHA. And tonight was, you knew the other one, this is a new piece of it. It's like another contract that's giving us two additional workers, licensed social workers. That's that. We have our Klingberg, who is, they're coming into Trong as well, as well as Community Health Center. So every building has licensed social workers that are non-board employees that can do wraparound services for a student and family during the day, if a parent can, or even after hours, right? Those are billable services, so we provide space, they provide service. So it's a wonderful thing. So we, where we would have one social worker, we have three social workers now in the building. Two being from, you know, non-board, one being board-approved. Our board hired social workers. Their first priority is to service students who have hours on an IEP, right? That's the first, that's their first, and that's mostly what they do in addition to.
Everything else.
Everything else. But our external partners that come in do not work with students who have an IEP. They can't, right? And so they work with everyone else. And at central registration, when you're registering your student, you can actually click on the link and sign up right there for Community Health Center. So, you know, we're ready. We're ready. We're going to wait and see, right? You have to assess the situation. The other thing, we do have the DESA, which is the tool that the state, as we're in the pilot program for the DESA. Our smaller communities will be taking the DESA this year. Donna Swaby is leading that with Jay Miramont together. Donna and Jay are really the ones who do a lot of partnering with me, and we have a lot of meetings with our, with our mental health providers outside. We'll keep you posted.
Okay. Now we have TVAL.
Yes. So while Christine is bringing up the presentation, I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of the past 10 years. So for approximately 10 years, teacher evaluation support has been in its current iteration, otherwise known as CEED, with the Connecticut State Department of Education. So over the past 10 years, both teachers, administration, and the state have learned a lot about teacher evaluation and the process. And at the end of the day, the biggest takeaway is making sure that there is a professional learning community, that there really is a cycle of continuous improvement and coaching conversations between the administrator and the teacher. And the teacher identifies their own professional learning goals, and that is a continuous cycle. So here in New Britain, just like all of the other school districts, approximately 10 years ago, they adopted the Connecticut State Department of Education CEED plan. And over the past 10 years, like a variety of other school districts, there were positive and not-so-positive things about the plan and things that maybe needed to be tweaked, obviously within the mandates of the Connecticut State Department of Education and CEED requirements. So when we had the opportunity during last year's pandemic, when the State Department said to us, "You can flex or add some flexibilities to your teacher evaluation plan," it was also time for New Britain to say, "We haven't really brushed off a plan in a number of years and kind of take a deep dive into how it's going." So myself and the PDEC Committee, which I have to publicly thank, they're a great group of educators and administrators that work tirelessly and collaboratively with us over the past year to come up with these revisions, as well as the flexibilities that led to these revisions. So what do we have? What we have, to me, the biggest takeaway is that the district and the Professional Development and Education Committee has put a commitment, as well as the superintendent, to focus on social and emotional learning for students, okay? And what we call our SLOs for teacher evaluation. So every teacher creates an SLO. We have decided as a learning community, as a school district, that we are committed to having those goals be around the social, emotional, and well-being of our students. We piloted that this year. It was extremely successful. Our teachers appreciated that. They were able to track the student's progress and come up with creative strategies to support our students beyond just the academics. We know the academics is important, but if our students aren't socially, emotionally regulated or in a good place, that learning can't happen or happen well. So that's the first change. And it aligns to what the state recommended we do as well. So there's some synergy there. The next thing is looking at what's called our IAGDs. Those haven't changed, but just to explain to you, once a teacher creates a student learning objective, their IAGDs are really the pathway to get there. What are your tangible steps that you're going to take to monitor and show growth or make adjustments mid-year if things aren't going as planned? The other component of teacher evaluation is the performance in practice. And Christina DeNegre will give you a little deeper dive into that. We only have three slides as well, by the way. So the performance in practice to us and to PDEC, we think is really the thing that teachers can own the best within a state mandate for a teacher evaluation. They get to choose what it is that they want to take a deep dive into their own professional learning. They get to choose what that is with agreement with their administrator. But they get to say, "This is what I want to embark in my classroom or with my grade-level team or my content area team." So that is, been refined in the plan. Most important that we see there in the third bullet is we added lots of examples, templates, and embedded resources. And over 10 years, technology has changed, right? So our document's a little shorter. We have a lot of embedded resources for our teachers to make this process easier, to giving them templates, ideas, examples. And that has been well-received and has been a part of a collaboration process with our PDEC Committee. And then the last thing is the platform update. So we have an e-platform that all of this information gets loaded into, and both the administrator and the teacher goes back and forth. And that's how they communicate with their progress, as well as their face-to-face or in some cases, screen time meetings. So we have worked very hard, and I'd like to publicly thank Christina DeNegre, who's worked with our platform contacts, to really streamline, to use that word again. It was a platform we used for the better part of a decade as well. It needed an update. It needed some things to be simplified, things to be streamlined. So that's what we've also done over this year. And our document has been submitted to the state, and it's been updated and can be found on our staff QuickLinks website. So Christina, I don't know if you can hear me. I'm going to pass it over to you to kind of explain a different line to performance in practice.
Sure. I can. Good evening, everyone. So like Mary Ellen alluded to, one of the best parts of TVAL is teachers are allowed to create what they call a performance in practice goal. It really puts the teacher in charge of and ownership of their own professional learning. It's aligned with the district goals. It has impact on their own growth, but it also impacts the growth of their students. What's exciting about it is that the teacher tracks their own progress and periodically throughout the school year. It's another talking point for administrators and teachers to focus on during feedback sessions, as well as mid-year meetings, end-of-year meetings, and any informal conversations that an administrator and teacher have. The teacher provides evidence as well as data that shows the impact of their goal, not only on their own professional learning, but on the student's achievement. It also allows administrators to really support teachers in their professional growth and allows them to really take on that coaching role, which is where we really want to move to. Even though for TVAL, you know, administrators evaluate, they also coach through the process. And the performance in practice goal, obviously, is agreed upon and settled upon by both the administrator and the teacher at the. is agreed upon and settled upon with both the administrator and the teacher at their beginning-of-year meeting. And it's something that they, again, track throughout the school year. It doesn't mean that it's a one-and-done. It can certainly be a culmination of years, or maybe a couple of years, they scalpel the goal. It's something that teachers choose with the guidance of their administrator. But again, it's not a one-and-done thing. It could be something that they might choose to do over the course of a year or two, maybe possibly three years. So it's an exciting time for teachers because they're able to choose their own growth path. And Mary Ellen, do you want me to go over the revisions to the platform?
You're welcome to. Keep going, that'd be great.
Sure. So after talking to our members of PDEC, there were some things they really liked about the platform, but the consensus was that it was a little daunting. So the TVAL platform in its original state, before the update, we had 12 different tabs. We streamlined that process, and we narrowed it, took 12 tabs and narrowed it down to seven. What's really exciting is that teachers each year would have to re-enter data from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year to the end of the year. Well, what's nice is, our representatives, I do want to thank Jeff Prokop, because he was also part of this design of the new platform, is that once the data is uploaded, it does roll over from mid-year to end of year, so we're able to track student progress throughout the year. Teachers don't have to re-enter data. Another exciting piece is the observation tab. What will happen in TVAL this year is that any observation based on your status in the district, the number of observations that need to be completed will be uploaded to that tab. So an administrator can simply just click on the observation tab and see how many observations they need to complete for that teacher. Administrators will also get a monthly email reminder of how many observations they've completed and what they have left to do for the year. The other thing that was really exciting, and teachers, I know this sounds trivial, but teachers said, you know, "We can't upload things. We want to be able to upload things to the actual observation." In the original state, you'd have to go to an artifacts tab, upload the evidence, or pictures, or something that they wanted to use as evidence, and they would have to toggle between two tabs. Now with the observation tab, they can upload documents, pictures, they can scan things in and upload as an attachment, so the evaluator can see everything in that one tab. And it also allows the evaluator to upload attachments as well, scripted notes and other things, maybe some pictures that they've taken in the classroom as evidence, as part of their feedback. What's really been, I'm sorry, does somebody have a question? Okay, sorry. And what's really been nice about the streamline and the platform is that it just makes the platform much more user-friendly. Administrators are going to get a full day of training during August Admin PD Week, that's coming up this week, and they'll get ongoing training throughout the year, as well as coaching throughout the year, on how to leverage and use the platform to support and coach teachers.
Thanks, Christina. And just one more thing in regards to PDEC for the board, just for clarification, is we talk a lot about teacher evaluation, and that is part of the PDEC acronym, but we also talk and dedicate time, of course, because when we meet, to talk about professional learning, and our colleagues in the academic office play a part in those meetings as well. So it's important that PDEC is a steering committee, in other words, they give us feedback, and they steer us in the direction of what's working, right? And what can be learned. And so we dedicate those meetings to either our teacher evaluation classes, which was heavy this year because of the flexibility of the pandemic, as well as our vision, but we also dedicated time to talk about the incredible, you know, very complex professional learning plan that we have for both our certified staff and our support staff as well, and listening to feedback from them. So that is what we do at those meetings, and that's why it's important to have all voices at the table of our teachers, on a variety of different content areas, and in the regard, et cetera. So that is our overview of teacher evaluation. Any questions about TVAL, or about the revisions?
Somebody, I think when I first started, we had a whole presentation on how they do, and I was like, whoa.
It's still the same kind of...
No, I saw the 12 to seven, so that was good, right? 12 tabs to seven tabs, that's good.
It's really the two-point-o, you know, it's just kind of, it's streamlined, you're trying to make a process easier for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we are now ready to move.
Where are we?
Done all of our presentations. I think we are ready to move to the consent agenda.
I got committee and board.
Yeah, that is, yes, we skipped over them the first time, so committee reports.
We didn't meet, nobody met.
Nobody met, okay. Board reports.
I will say, if you see myself, Merrill, Joey, Diana doing this, right? We were able to attend the cave conference, and it was, you know, it was really good. I was disappointed in one of the areas, but they actually brought in the principal from Windsor, and, not the principal, sorry, the superintendent and the president of the board, and then somebody from Guilford. Was it Guilford?
Same combination.
Same combination, right? And they did, somebody got up and said, "How do you feel about SROs? Have you been asked to remove them?" And both, like Windsor unanimously was like, "No," and they did, they said, "It's all about that MOU," and Guilford is very new to the, new to it. It was just nice to hear them speak. They're having the same issues that we're having, right? And at the end, there was a, "Make sure you're taking care of yourself," right? Self-care is huge for people who are caring for everybody else. And that's all. But it was one of those, "If you do this, this makes you go to your happy place," and then we like, "No, we can go away from your happy place." So that was all. It was just...
I was waiting for the explanation.
Yeah, it was very...
There was a whole thing going about, you think about something that makes you anxious and sad, and then you think about something that makes you laugh. And while you're doing that, you hold your thumb, and you basically condition yourself so as you hold your thumb, it makes you think about some, it makes you laugh and feel good. And so, yeah.
Shall I talk about this?
Is that what, how you're trying to go to your... I broke it.
Yeah, the real conversations between the board chairs and the superintendents were about contentious issues that they had faced, and how they handled it. And the board chair message board has been full of stuff about a five-hour meeting in Cheshire with stuff about masks. So...
Yeah. It was, I mean, I was disappointed in the first, in the first part of it. But that second part, it was pretty good, dealing with it. You know, I mean, I don't think we've ever gotten to their point, I'm not going to lie. I did try to Google the meeting to try to watch it, but I couldn't find it. But I guess it was pretty bad, where, you know, the superintendent like lashed out, and then it just was, but it's how to deal with that, and how do you, how to deal with it. Because I think we're going to face it a lot more in the next couple of months, right? It's only going to get a little bit worse for everybody. I get my share of hate texts. "I can't believe you guys are masking our kids. I can't believe you're doing this. I can't believe you're doing uniforms." So we just have to be able to take care of ourselves in the end.
Yep. Any other board reports?
I'd like to just share my appreciation for all the summer school staff and community-based organizations that pulled off a really great program for five weeks. This was the first summer that we asked a lot of staff to work five weeks, including our community-based organizations. And it was, it's been a long time since a lot of our children have been in school every day, and we've had children in that program for the full five weeks every day.
Yeah.
And there was a lot. So it was a lot of work, and I know the school staff worked really hard. And in my eyes, it was a success. I attended Funder's Day, which was during the three-week CEE and Extreme and Create Programs, and it was amazing to see what the kids were doing in their programs, with their teachers, with the CBOs, and they were so excited to be back in school. So, and it was done with little, the program basically doubled since the year before, with hardly any more administrative support.
And so can I shout out to Jen Wright, who is amazing, and, you know, hopefully she's getting some rest now, because it was a whirlwind. It was a lot of work. She worked really hard, as did the leads, you know. But it was really nice to go into the building and see kids there. Some of the projects were just amazing. The Avery's, I mean, the partnership with Avery's and furniture refinishing, jewelry making with Avery Bottle Caps.
Did you end up buying that table?
I'm not done yet, but I told them, "I'm buying it." They're doing a really cool table with bottle caps. I want that. I said, "I will buy that from you." Yeah, so, so yeah. A lot of the kids were really excited, you know, really talkative, happy. It was nice.
Okay. Yep.
Currently, the board is in negotiations for two contract administrators and teachers that have, negotiations are ongoing. Obviously, can't say much about it in the public meeting, but I believe we'll have an update at the next board meeting, based on just the timelines of all of that. So there will be an update for, I believe, our August board meeting.
September.
September.
September. I'm...
Months, days.
Just in denial that school starts in a...
Total.
It's tax-free week.
Tax-free, yes, right.
That's a good announcement, though, right?
That's like my measure of time.
Okay, so, any other...
I know, right?
Any other board reports? Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda.
I need to pull off item B, please.
Item B, off the consent agenda. There is a consent agenda.
I literally have like three neighbors and all types of people on that list, they'll bother us.
Well, you know what, that's what I'm going through. I just took a picture for her mom. I'm like, "Oh, thank you."
Okay.
So...
So, that is, okay. So we, any other things that need to get taken off the consent agenda? All right, so there's only one thing on the consent agenda. Given that nobody else wants to take anything off, clerk can cast one vote for the consent agenda, and now we move on to item B.
Motion to accept the report of personnel transactions and extracurricular appointments?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Aye, abstain.
Okay. And for those of you who are new to the board, abstentions are when you have a conflict of interest. Somebody you know is getting hired, or someone in your family is getting hired. That's a good example of a potential conflict of interest. Okay, so now let's move on to new business.
Is she talking at all?
I don't think so. She's looking away. No, she's okay.
Okay.
I have no idea. This is like the weirdest matrix, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the revised 2021-2022 district-wide calendar.
Second.
What is the revision? I was just going to say, I couldn't figure out what the revision is.
Mr. Forough can answer that, because I can't remember.
We adjusted the trimester date for third trimester, because we were able to...
Just little writing on the side, okay.
You know, we don't need as much time with, we work our second email, or send that year later, so teachers aren't going to close grades as early. And I think we added Gentin to...
We did.
I think that wasn't on previous, so Gentin was added.
Okay. Any discussion on this? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one.
Motion to approve revised board policy 5132.1, school attire.
Second.
All right. I know, Annie, you had thoughts on this one?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah. I would like to make a motion that we leave the school policies for dress code as is this previous year. I don't think we're giving the parents and the teachers and the students enough time to discuss this, and I think it's too short of a time to try to make major changes as proposed, so that we should wait and have them have extend the 2019 to 2020 dress code for another year.
Wait. Twenty to twenty-one?
Twenty to twenty-one.
So the COVID dress code.
Whatever it was last.
Yeah, so extend the COVID dress code, yeah.
You want to, somebody want to summarize that for people who don't have kids in the school and weren't focused on it?
Needs a second.
Okay, we have a, do we need a second?
I will second her motion.
Okay, we have a second. All right, so now.
Yeah, I'm already on it.
Okay.
I, in spirit, agree with what Ms. Parker is proposing. My concern is that the motion that we put in place previously was to fully suspend our dress code policy in its entirety. And I, you know, just with all the students coming back in, this would put us in a place where there is no policy or guidelines in place. So it would be left up entirely to administration on how they want to enforce, because there would be basically no board policy. Because what we'd motioned before was to suspend the dress code policy during COVID because of numerous concerns, you know, the fact that students weren't going into school, things like that. Again, I'm not necessarily saying that that's not something we can do. I'm just wanting to make clear what that would potentially mean.
So if I may, I do believe the assumption was, when we did the motion to suspend the uniform policy, was there's no uniforms, but there was a dress code. There was a dress code, but there was no uniform policy. Kids did not have to go out and buy uniforms, right? That's what I believed I was, that I was approving, or saying yes to, and if I wasn't, my bad. Because I definitely would not want some of the things that were stripped from this policy to be stripped from last year either, right? I won't even go into the list of them, but I don't know if there's a difference. Isn't there admin regs and a uniform policy and then admin regs? Like, you can't wear a shirt, a skirt that's showing your booty, right? You can't wear a baseball cap. You can't wear a do-rag. You can't wear bandanas. Things like that, I assumed were still in place. And I could, that's what I believe Annie is saying. I'm not quite sure if, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
That's what I'm saying, and also, that was my belief too, that we were only talking about the uniforms for last year, not the whole dress code.
Right.
Exactly.
And that may be my ignorance as far as dress code versus uniform policy, like I thought the dress code was an admin reg. You know what I mean? Like it was your admin piece of it. Could be very wrong.
You are not wrong.
Nick, you want to talk in a little bit? Others? Other thoughts on this? So I have, okay, I was just, I have a question. Given what we approved last year, the motion is to, the amendment is to continue what we did last year. I'm just asking sort of question, clarification of, did what we passed last year totally eliminate dress code as well as uniform policy, or did it just simply say you don't have to go out and buy uniforms?
The actual motion that we had was to suspend our school attire policy. Like, we call our uniform policy, we call it all sorts of things. It's all the same policy. So if you suspend the policy, you're suspending the admin regs, you're suspending all of it. That's, now, this may not... That's, now, this may not have caused an issue last year.
Right, because there was like twenty percent of kids in, in school.
But I'm just, I.
Right.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, go ahead. You could speak, go ahead.
Oh, for Annie. She's delayed.
Go ahead, Nick.
She's delayed again.
Okay, um.
I thought I.
Just go with it.
Go ahead, Annie. Now you're muted.
No, I thought Nick was saying something. I told him, go ahead and speak, and I'll wait.
Okay, go ahead, Nick.
Okay, um, personally, I am, I feel like kicking the can again down the road is, uh, not in the best interest of the district. I feel the policy committee, we had an extremely long meeting where we went through our school attire policy line by line, based off of parent feedback, based off of things like, uh, the school, the district mission and vision. And the recommendations that we're bringing forth, and again, uh, beyond that, I also put out to the board, uh, an offer to talk with anybody and come up with amendments, help people draft amendments to include things that they had concerns about. There's, I, I think it's the current policy that we had in place, the one that was currently on the books. As we reviewed it in policy, we talked about the fact that there are several things in there that are just flat out outdated. That have sexist overtones, that have other things that just aren't who we are as a district. They don't align with our district mission and vision. They don't align with our, our idea that we meet each student where they are. And I feel like there's been a good bit of work done, and I'm happy to continue to work with people on changing it. But passing a policy tonight doesn't mean that it can't be something that's revisited again in the future. And what Ms. Parker is describing in practice would be basically looking at the policy as proposed, having those discussions about areas where the boards have contention on the K to twelve guidelines or pre-K to twelve guidelines, and then taking out section three. Because section three is where you have this separate set of guidelines for pre-K through five. And if there are things board members feel strongly about as far as what our K, pre-K to twelve guidelines should or should not include, then we should have that debate, and we should have that discussion, and we should vote on it. That's my personal feelings.
And I would like to respond by saying that.
Point of order.
When, when we, when we had the survey, the survey was voted not to change the uniform, not to get rid of the uniforms. I don't know how many of you were around when we voted to have the uniform. It was a big deal. It included the whole community, and it was not over a short period of time. I feel like this, this committee, Matt, and then we didn't have a chance to vote on it as a whole, and that the community did not get a bit of sense, trust their opinions about it. And I'll see what the rush is. I'm not saying that you can't change it. I'm saying, why do we have to change it at the last minute when school is about to start?
Dr. Sims?
So, I mean, tonight's vote is the vote as a whole, so everything we do goes to committee first. Committee uses the information that we have, then it comes to a vote. The timing was not great. Obviously, we're voting on it now. School is about to start. That is definitely, you know, an issue that happened. And the reason is because we actually wanted more information for the parents. We took a survey, not a vote. A survey is information, just like we were talking about the SROs and the whoever, right? When you take a survey, you get information, you gather information, and you get perspectives, and you consider both who's helped, who's harmed, who feels a certain way. It was not an absolute overwhelming amount of people who wanted to keep uniforms. It was slightly over fifty percent, right? We know if every single person didn't answer, there's a margin of error. That's how surveys work. And so, at the end of the day, almost half of our families either wanted to get rid of or modify. And that is an important amount of people. And so we took an extra month because we went back and said, let's hear the qualitative piece, not the yes, no, maybe, as even a caller stated, which was kind of confusing. Some people thought they were voting yes on actually keeping them off. Right? So, we got more info. We got people who said that it was actually difficult for them to buy both uniforms and evening and weekend clothes. We got a little bit more deep into that data, and that is exactly what we discussed during that very long meeting where we carefully went line by line. In addition to, like Nick said, we know we are trying to align things to a district that is talking about equity, that is talking about a profile of a graduate a certain way. Um, and I know there have been contentions because I've had those conversations, just like I've had a ton of conversations with people who think it's great that we're going in a much more progressive and equitable direction, right? And I know for me, the conversations that I've had with people like staff at no point have actually talked about an educational value, but rather people's personal feelings about something like a do-rag or whatever. Is it professional? Is it, you know, college and career ready? I teach in a college setting where kids come in with a ratty hat because they didn't feel like doing their hair, and it does not affect the extremely expensive education that they're receiving. So, we're not, we're not preparing kids for what we said we're preparing them for if we're not aligning what we do to what the real world does, which is actually a whole lot more flexible with very few exceptions. And if that's the case, that's people's interests, and then that's what they get into. So, I know for me, the justifications for, in my case, from who I spoke to, a minority of people who have, you know, certain concerns were not aligned to what we claim we want to do, and were not aligned to educational value.
And I'm saying that wearing a, a, a do-rag or slapping over your head because you had a bad hair day is not the profile of a student. And I'm also saying, why don't we have a survey, and then we got the majority that said they did not want to get rid of uniforms, and then we decide, well, we're gonna look at more information. We're not gonna look at the majority. If that had been stated in the beginning, maybe it would be acceptable. But when people fill out a survey, they expect that the majority wears.
That's not true.
I'm not sure why we're rushing to do this this year. That's all I'm saying. Why does it have to be done now when school is starting in a few weeks? What's the rush? If it was that high a whip all this time, and we haven't done anything about it, why important to get it done right this minute?
So, just like some of my personal feelings about, I don't have a kid in the district anymore. I can read you, like my original plan was, I was gonna read you all the hate mail that I got. And not, and not all was hate, but a lot of it was just, you know, you asked us to do a survey. Or, thank you for making my life more difficult because I have three children in the district. Now I have to figure out what they're wearing. I can't have a logo. I can't have this. But that's not even, that's not even it. You guys met back in June? May? To do the policy?
June, June.
Multiple times. I know I've asked to have a special meeting to discuss, especially before it went out to the community. I think we set a very dangerous precedence to have a committee make a recommendation like that, saying that you feel like the whole entire board is gonna be a yes. Right? We're, we're very confident this is gonna pass. But even though we've had, Nick, you and I have had multiple conversations, and we've asked, can we have a special meeting? Let's get it out there. Let's, let, before we put it out to the public, let's talk about it. Because those numbers that you're talking about, fifty-five percent were maintained, twenty-six were modified, and nineteen percent was eliminated. So you combine the eliminate and, and modify to supersede your maintain. And I'm okay with however you guys want to say it, it wasn't a vote, but multiple people have said, I will never answer another survey. As, you don't listen to us. Why would I answer a survey? What's the point? And that's, I probably have fifteen of those, so.
I got more because I got some in Spanish. And I, and I have, I'm not trying, I'm sorry. I'll raise my hand. I'm sorry.
That's, that's all. I'm with Annie. Unfortunately, I did think that I was saying no to the uniform, that admin regs were still there, so that's my fault. So I don't know, where do you go from there?
Uh, I actually asked for guidance for, you know, just kind of navigating through the announcement that was made, the general announcement that was seen, and that my ex-husband called and spoke with somebody at the office, and this is what they told him, and actually told him that this is, that there was going to be some change. I said, well, wait a minute, it isn't anything that we have been privy to, number one. And number two, you know, anybody can say whatever they want. Ultimately, I have four children in district that I'm buying clothes for. In addition to, almost like as a backup to school uniforms. So the last minute hour of making a decision isn't making me feel happy about the process because I have to almost protect myself in case we still have uniforms. Which means for people like my nephew or my son who need their pants altered just because of their body type, then I have that expense too. So it's, I'm looking at it like, why do we need to do this right now? Why even, and you're right, it's a precedence that was really, we should not even be teetering with, let's, let's put an announcement out there going forward because we anticipate something. Why do that? I understand that, but that's still speaking to the eleventh hour part of it. That's not giving me enough time to save up to buy clothes to fit within the, I want them to be unique. I want them to express their creativity. But from a board point of view, I don't think that we should be doing this right now. And that, it reflects me because I was also one of those people that said, you know what, just leave it alone. Leave it alone just for this year. Make it one less thing we have to worry about. Let's just worry about getting our kids on the bus, them fed and healthy, them taking care of whatever, working on the parent engagement part of it. That needs a lot of work. Let's work on that, not the uniforms. Just leave it alone. And I, and I wouldn't even call it kicking the can down the road. I would just say, listen, as a board, we're gonna delay this decision for right now. We're gonna continue to discuss it and continue while we're having these community meetings and everybody getting together on the dashboard tomorrow from four to five. Ask about uniforms too. Or direct, but I answered. I answered for all four of my kids because it came up on my dashboard for each kid. So, you know, CJ, Christopher, you know, like every single one of them, I got that on there, and I answered for each one of them. For me at least, to maintain, and I thought that that's what we were all, I don't know. I thought that was the majority, and that's what it was.
Other board members? Questions or thoughts?
Well, I, I concur with what is being said by Annie, and I don't know what it means for anybody else, but maybe it's, it's for, for me, it may be a generational thing. Because there are certain things about this policy going forth that I'm uncomfortable with. So I pretty much stand in agreement with holding off for a while.
Okay, Sue. Diana?
Um, I agree with Nick on the changes to the policy. I agreed during the, the meeting. Some of the policies are very outdated and sexist. But I do feel like we kind of went off track somewhere. Um, and just listening to parents that I've spoken to who just felt very strongly, whether it was for financial reasons, um, whether it was just the difficulty of getting multiple children um, off and ready to school. Um, a lot of them felt that it would be, it would benefit the families to either keep, keep it as it is or just go with straight uniforms. So I just wanted to, I wanted to be a voice for, for the families that I've heard from and what they have, um, what they have expressed to me.
So, what you're expressing is that they're sort of two different, let's go with the uniforms that we are used to, or let's not have uniforms because we didn't have the uniforms last year, and it's pretty late in the game.
I think that's a lot of the concern is that, is the timing.
Right, so those are completely different things, and then we have another issue, which is, a group of people who felt like, um, when we voted to relax the uniform policy last year um, because of COVID, that they didn't realize that the motion actually suspended the entire thing, which meant all of the other dress code related things like,
Right.
you know, this.
Like the hats, the do-rags, the, the, all of, all of that.
And, so, we have this motion now to sort of stay, the, the motion that Annie made is to stay with essentially no uniform policy at all. And no, and that means that it also gets rid of the other restrictions which Annie says she wants. So it's sort of like Annie's motion doesn't do what Annie has said she wants done.
Right.
And so I'm just trying to figure out, do we want to withdraw this motion and come up with a better motion? Because if we pass your motion, it's gonna do exactly what you don't want to have happen.
Right. Nick has his hand up.
Well, tell me, doesn't, can someone read what the motion was that year? Because it did not make it clear we were voting that, that we did not want to continue with the uniforms for that one year. Nothing else was said about any other, uh, dress code at all. And if that was part of the motion at the time, then it should have been stated clearly that what was in the fight did, then that was a mistake, or that was someone not being very clear about what the motion was.
Failure to understand the policy.
So I.
I get.
Okay, Nick.
What, do we have it? Can we read what it was, what the motion was?
I'm, I've been looking.
Nick has his hand up, and he's been given the floor.
I don't know, uh, I don't have the wording of the exact motion, but I, I think part of the problem is when we did that last year, we were distance. And that is something that had not gone through policy. That had been brought to the floor by community members and by board members. And we made that decision kind of quickly, and perhaps that should have been given more oversight. But where we are now is where we are now. So, um, and we could potentially, like, there are avenues forward, but again, I feel like what Ms. Parker's intent of is having us go into this school year without having, uh, a requirement for uniforms and get grades K through twelve or pre-K through twelve. And if that's the case, an easy way to get there um, would be to take this, take this policy, remove section three, and then as far as other elements that you're looking to keep from the previous policy, those can be added in to section two, and we can debate those as a board. Or we can adopt what we have here, um, and again, like, I just feel like what we're trying to do by going back to the existing policy is more complicated than moving forward. And if there are things in that policy that you want to add into this new revised policy, we can have that debate.
So for reference, the section three is district-wide school attire guidelines, all students pre-K through grade five.
Correct.
That's where it says, no graphics, text, or logos.
And it talks about the, the colored or patterned shirts, et cetera. And just as a point of clarification, I, a number of people who I saw respond to this, I think the word logo was misinterpreted. Like, it was never meant to be like a polo shirt that says Tommy Hilfiger. Like, that's not what we were discussing. Like, that's not what we were discussing committee. We were talking about like large branded T-shirts. And I think that was, I mean, that language was lifted from the previous policy.
Yeah.
You know, that language existed already.
Right.
Um, and I think it was something that just, you know, when people saw it, interpreted differently than, as it had been in the past. But, you know, that's another point altogether.
Sue?
So can we? Yes, um, I, yeah, I was going to speak to that piece. Um, so again, to the part about when the meeting happened and when the vote was going to take place. The reason information went out to families was because families were asking, "What do we do?" And we were like, "We're not having a vote yet. We don't know what to do." And that's why it was put out with a caveat that this is a draft of what's being worked on. Now, to the, the, the point about the pattern and the logos and whatever, that is actually, um, something I saw a lot of concerns about as well and received concerns about. Um, that people would just rather not have those guidelines and wear whatever shirt they want. This, like Nick said, was pulled right from the, the previous policy and was actually the compromise to, you know, the people who, for example, I would say no uniforms at all ever. And the people who do want some more guidelines. So interestingly, the piece that is the compromise is the piece that like, no one likes, right? Which is fine, but it's not like it was put there to make things more difficult. It was actually the entire opposite. It was the, you want some guidelines, some people are concerned about, you know, my kid is gonna wear, you know, my kid is not gonna have the fancy brands and might get made fun of or whatever. I don't believe in that, but that's, if that's what was a concern, this is what was ironed out in a committee with four board members, bipartisan, and then was moving forward to the board, which is where we're at now.
Five.
Five, sorry.
Can I just say this, to touch on exactly what you actually, what you just said, but I'm just saying from what it looks like as a parent who's not on that particular panel at the time that you guys were having the discussion. For all of the emails, Facebook messages, telling me off at church, which I thought was funny because in the eyes of Jesus, you're telling me off in Spanish and I have no problem responding, but fine. And then everything else, and then, you know, and my ex. You know, the weird thing is, is that we're taking all of the responses that we have gotten as board members and said, "Ah, we should have clarified that." Or that's another point that we could actually, you know, make sure that we discuss. We don't need to do that right now and change things right now being that what we learned from this experience is, huh, we need to define logo. Who knew going into this that we would need to explain what a logo was or give it any more thought than, "That's a Nike swoosh, that's an Adidas stripe," and a couple of other things thrown in there. But to your point, that's what I'm saying is, is that like, we're even finding out now, "Hey, we needed to expand our definition of what this is, of what we mean, and this is what it looks like." For our families, that are the ones actually shouldering the economic burden of purchasing for one, two, multiple kids. This is just kind of where we're at. And I, and I get it. I see it from all sides. Okay, you want to change, but now we're learning what we need to discuss with our families because they're bringing it to us. If we didn't give them the space at the time that we did the survey, can you have any questions over here? That wasn't, that wasn't there on the survey. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, we have a seconded motion from Annie, which is to leave the policy as it is now, which is, we suspended the policy. The policy that we suspended is not just about the, the kids have to wear uniforms. It covered all of the issues related to the dress code. That was, we suspended the entire policy.
Mm-hmm.
So, Annie's motion-
I'm with that.
Okay. So Annie's motion is to leave that policy suspended altogether for the rest of the year.
Which also suspends the admin regs, which suspends the dress code, right, everything along with it.
Yes, right. So-
Just want to make that super clear.
Mm-hmm.
We have a seconded motion. Is there further discussion on that motion?
Well, I, I want to say something else. When we suspended the policy, we said K through 8.
Right.
That's what we were addressing. We did not say the complete policy for the whole school system.
When did we vote?
And if you, if you, if that was the intent, that was not clear. It was clear that we were voting to suspend wearing uniforms for a school year. Nothing about any of those other things that you're talking about. Now, if we need to change the mo, change the motion, then we can change it. But it should just talk about K through 8, not doing anything. Everything else should still in place. And then we should have a meeting and give everybody an opportunity to speak up about their concerns about all of these issues.
That same community thing.
It's just not fair to make a decision about something without including everyone, not just a committee, but everyone, meaning the community, the parents, the student, the teacher.
Hear me? Are we able to find the actual motion that was made?
Yeah, yeah.
Nick, do you have it? Oh, I thought you raised your hand. Do you remember when we voted?
I have, I have the motion.
Okay.
It was, we did it twice, right? First time it was for a certain time period, then we extended it to be, to be for the whole year, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So the second time we met, um, Mr. Mercier motioned to extend the suspension of school uniform policy 5132.20 to retire 2020, 2021 school year, seconded by Ms. Laya, motion carried unanimously.
It was 5132?
5132.20, school uniform policy.
Uh, .10.
July 2020? Because I'm totally getting the procedural part of this, right? When what we, the assumption we made, as, as wrong as it was, was it uniform? Nothing to do with dress code. And I'm, I'm feeling like I've beaten a divorce. And I don't have an answer for that motion.
Nick? Okay, so, I have a procedural question that you made. Can some, uh, can we, first he was made a motion, amend a motion? Or something?
I, procedurally, there's also an issue that realistically, the motion's actually out of order because we're discussing a proposed policy. And the motion is not to the proposed policy. And that really didn't dawn on me, but that's the other issue here. It's basically a separate piece of business. Because it's not like we took up our current policy. But, that's-
Okay, I, I understand your procedural there.
So we have to vote on his, the policy?
Well, no, I mean, there's a number of ways we can handle it, but the, the motion that was brought before us, the piece of business, is the amended policy.
Right.
The motion that was made by Ms. Parker is not technically germane to it because it's not dealing with the amended policy. It's a motion for the board to take an action that is related to this, but not related to what's before us. It's really sort of an out of order motion. But if we want to dispose of it as a separate piece of business, it's, it's complicated.
Yes, now that we spent twenty minutes discussing it. Um, and my fear is that the, the motion that Annie has made does not do what Annie wants it to ma, to do.
I agree.
And that maybe there's a better way to achieve what a number of you have articulated. Um, and-
But that starts with us not holding on changing.
Right, so the question might be, Annie, do you want to withdraw your motion and then we work on amending the committee's motion to achieve what, something closer to what you want to get done?
I mean, we can also-
Or we could vote on it, whichever you want to do.
Can we motion to table it for a second reading?
What that does is then-
Okay, I don't know what it does, like, because then your uniform policy comes back and lets me vote again to suppress it, right? So these parents are gonna be scrambling to get uniforms of blue and white. I know, I know, but, I don't, I don't know. I don't have the right answer. I know, sorry. Because I was thinking, you know what, and then Ms. Sarah says, superintendent says, "We can go, you have until..."
November 1st to get your uniforms.
Up until then, I'm gonna have to have a sign up?
Yes.
So I think that's the worst possible thing.
That's the worst.
Is that people, you know, this is the tax free week. A lot of parents decide this is the week they're gonna go buy stuff. And we need to either tell them, "You're buying uniforms," or "You're not buying uniforms." And the issue of, the other, um, dress code issues that don't have to do with uniforms or not uniforms, feels like that could actually be dealt with at a subsequent meeting. But the issue that, that people, the parents care about right now is, "What clothes am I buying my kids this week?"
Can I just ask you a quick question? Because it's, it's actually on what you're on right now. When you guys voted, and this is long before I went on the board, when you guys had all voted and made whatever changes, suspended everything, we still had that amount of time at the end of the school calendar year that all of my kids attended school. They went in uniforms that were left and also some regular clothing that did not have anything that was outstanding.
Right.
And at home, I already knew that, um, you know, not to show too much, cover whatever a judge is gonna look at, you know? But in reality, it was, there wasn't anything crazy and outlandish. So even if we say to our parents, "Listen, we're going to," and that was fine with me because it was able to give me a couple more miles on the same uniforms I had bought at the beginning of our theoretical school year that never happened. Not saying I could still use all of them, but it was still cheaper for me to buy uniforms at Rainbow and J.C. Henni than during this week, than it was. And also at least a little bit of leeway to be able to put them in normal clothing. We are all, as a community, still coming out of COVID. So what about if we just say, "Use what you got in your closet, use it."
You know, uniforms.
You know, we've got uniforms, but you've also, I'm saying, what we suspended was the uniform policy. So at the end of the school year, a couple of days, my kids did go into school with regular clothing and they were not sent home.
Right.
And that was fine because before they left, they made sure that they weren't, you know, nothing else.
Right, so, I mean, the whole reason that we started this conversation in the first place was because we knew that lots of families had lost income. Families are facing eviction. And we didn't want to burden them with having to go out and buy uniforms that they couldn't afford.
Or even it fully costs more.
And I don't know that that's actually changed much since then.
You don't think that they've-
My hand is up.
Yes, okay, sorry. Go ahead.
I mean, whatever.
I just, you know, we still have families hurting. And yes, the, um, child tax credit has put some money into people's pockets. We still have families who are-
None of it went to uniforms.
Facing, yeah, lots of it went to fate for food, as you could see from the stats that say that child nutrition, you know, child hunger went down as a result of it. But, um, we have, we have something we need to decide because parents are waiting for the answer.
Right, and I, and I will add that, part of that conversation, um, in, in coming up with this policy is that giving people flexibility does not take away someone's right to enjoy uniforms. If that's what you want, you said, even if, even if we said, "Strike the whole policy," you can send your kids to school in uniform. There is nothing in this policy that says you cannot wear a uniform. So it's not the either or. It's giving more flexibility does just that, give more flexibility. To those who want it, to those who don't want it. I know people who said, "I love the uniforms. We already had a conversation. My kid is going in them and they're fine." Cool, do that. That works for you. If it doesn't work for you, you don't have to do that in these hard times. And for me, eternally, but, you know, if, if we're talking about right now.
Well, here, here's the deal. We can suspend my motion, but, but in place of that one, I want to put in a motion that they do not have to wear uniforms this year and the rest of the policy. That this motion is only dealing with uniforms, not with the rest of the policy. The rest of the policy should be, as has been written previously before we suspended the policy.
Point of order.
I'm not looking, I wanted it to be the way we thought we were voting on in the first place.
Okay, thank you, Annie.
Which was available K through 8.
That, that motion is out of order because that's not the business before.
Okay, so the, the, I think the way to do this is to withdraw your motion, hear the proposed motion, and then propose amendments that do what you are trying to do. And then see if the majority of the board supports that or not. Does that make sense, Annie?
Sure.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your original motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have withdrawn that motion. Go ahead.
Okay, we are looking at policy that has, we've discussed a lot of elements of this already. Um, I did get feedback from some board members and I tried to take any feedback that, that I got. And I put forward some proposals of ways to amend this policy to make it more in alignment with what board members want. Um, to address the concern that Ms. Parker brought up first, um, I'm gonna propose that, I have a motion to amend that we strike Section 3 from the current policy in its entirety and renumber the additional sections accordingly. What that would do was that would eliminate the quote-unquote "uniform requirement" and get grades pre-K through 5. This draft policy had already removed them from 6 through 8. So then we would have no quote-unquote "uniform requirements" required all the way from pre-K through 12. That was one of the concerns that people have raised.
So that would be eliminating it completely, not for the coming year. It would just be a complete elimination?
It would be a complete elimination, but then the board, if the board in the future wants to use the time to review and discuss those things with parents and put that back in, that's something they could always add back in at a future date.
Excuse me, uh, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to introduce this, but I am not saying I want to get rid of uniforms. I am saying suspend it for a year. Because I don't think, it took a lot longer to come up with it, wear a uniform. And then we, and one night, you decided, "No uniforms ever." No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I am saying for this year. Because I think that the families should have the opportunity to speak about whether they should be going forever. It wasn't done through a committee when they put them in place. And I don't think they should be taken out through a committee. I'm not gonna be a part of that. So we can, we can move on with some other things. It's not what I was saying.
Second?
Okay, so you have a second to-
The motion to strike Section 3.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion on striking Section 3, which would eliminate uniform requirements. Annie has already started talking before we actually had a seconded motion, but, um, the motion is to, to eliminate uniforms. And the question then is, is that what you want to do, or is that you want to make an amendment to that? Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, in response to Ms. Parker's concern, the only reason that I am hesitant to put in something in here saying that, you know, we're striking or putting in an additional thing in this policy that suspends it for just that one year, um, that's, that's something that we could do. That would be a different motion, in which case you would motion not to strike. And instead, you'd motion to add a clause, a Section G at the end, to add a grace period or a year where it doesn't exist. So that's a separate, that'd be a separate motion. That would still leave us with the problem that a lot of parents expressed around the language of logos, things like that. Um, I would think that it might be a better, better thing to do is to strike- I would think that it might be a better, better thing to do is to strike the whole section. And if the board continues to want to have this conversation and wants to look at whether we go back to doing full uniforms, we can, those, the board can have those conversations with parents during the whole next year and have something in place. That's, I'm not saying this can't be a continued conversation, but I'm saying adding something down at the end there, you know, we've, we've already discovered that this language is not necessarily the best language because of ambiguity. So I, I don't know if I'd be comfortable leaving on not the best language left in there just with a sun, you know, a, a grace period on it.
Gail had her hand up.
Oh, sorry.
This will actually be, it's a quick question. Are you saying striking three from the policy that exists today, not your recommended policy?
No, we are, the current motion before the board is our, is the recommended policy.
The recommended policy is striking three?
Section three.
Section three.
And that's the part that deals with the, the pre-K through five.
And again, the board adopting a policy today does not preclude the board from adopting a new policy even six months from now, if the point is to have more time, to suspend temporarily and have more time. Rather than suspend, we can adopt a policy and revise, revisit the policy at, at another time.
And that could also work in doing it the other way, to get rid of the policy that you're proposing, to leave the policy as is and amend that to temporarily for a year, allow people not to wear uniforms. You could just get rid of this policy for now, you have a whole year to discuss it. You have a lifetime to discuss it if you want to, but put the policy, leave the policy in that was there originally before you changed it. And then just amend that to not wear uniforms for their school year if they choose not to.
So that's a different motion than what we have before us. The motion-
I understand that.
Okay, but we, we do need to follow parliamentary procedure and address the motion that's, the motion that's on the floor. So have we gone through the entire motion yet?
Motion and second and now we're discussing.
Yes, but I'm just discussing.
It's just been a mo, we've motioned to have the policy brought before the board. That motion was made and seconded. The motion currently before the board is to amend, amend the proposed policy to strike section three and renumber the rest accordingly.
And that would have the effect of eliminating uniforms across the board.
As a requirement.
As a requirement.
There's no option.
Is there further discussion on that?
I suppose. So head covering of any kind, the original head covering of any kind, including but not much, scarves, bandanas, curlers, masks, visors, kerchiefs, athletics, bandanas, that goes away.
That's not the current-
No, 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 that's the, this is, that's the original policy.
We're not-
I know.
Yeah.
So what I think what Annie is saying and where I would agree with Annie is, we're not gonna pass the policy as amended. And it's, we're gonna, we want to amend the current policy to get rid of section three that says you can, you can, don't have to wear a uniform.
There's-
That would be another amendment.
Well, no, that would be a whole other matter of business because the current policy is not before the board at the moment.
So then we, that's what I'm saying, right? So we'd have to say, bring in, we'd have to table yours for, for future, just saying, tell me if I'm wrong. Table yours for, for future. And then somebody would have to motion to bring in the policy onto the agenda to make it an amendment to it.
Would need to add a new item to the agenda and that item would need to address the current policy that-
That has been suspended.
Suspended for a year and would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Conversely, if there is language from the existing policy that you want to see carried over, another way to do that would just be to propose an amendment, putting that language into our current policy.
Right.
That's what I was thinking.
The only thing worse than writing by committee is writing by committee while on television?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say that, pretty much.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty much. Right.
Call the question?
Okay, so question, calling the question. I'm gonna restate the motions. Call the question means that we vote to end debate.
Well, it's just on, I'm not formally, I'm just saying if there's no other discussion.
Okay, so if there's no other discussion, then we can move forward with a vote on the proposed language. Just for clarity's sake, if you could just-
Just not on the proposed language, it'd just be on the motion to amend to strike section three. That's all that's before us right now.
Okay, so we're going to vote on a motion to strike section three, which would have the effect of eliminating uniforms.
This whole policy eliminates uniforms. So that's, that's kind of a misstatement, right? This is where we fall into the-
The language of pattern versus logo versus whatever, which was carried over from the original policy to this policy to try to have a halfway ground for people.
Right.
But people don't like it, so. We would eliminate uniform requirement and that language that people are finding problematic from the original.
But the key is get rid of uniforms, right?
Annie, it's basically getting rid of the saying that you have to wear a logo or what kind of shirt you probably should be wearing, but it also keeps-
A lot, yeah, I understand that part, yeah.
But it also keeps out the, the verbiage that you kinda wanna say, you can't wear a durag, you can't wear a ball cap, you can't-
That wasn't, that was never in that section before.
So we're dealing with section three right now.
Of the new policy.
But that exists, so that, those go away. That goes away when you put in this policy. Am I right or am I wrong?
But we're not voting on the policy right now. That's the thing. We're not voting on this policy to put it in.
You can still vote to make amendments.
We're currently discussing just a limited amendment to take out section three. After we have that vote, if Ms. Parker or yourself want to motion to add additional language to section two, in fact, one of the proposed amendments-
No.
Was, was based off of feedback from multiple sources. And we can, you can propose other amendments to add things in and we debate and we vote.
But how many times you are saying in different ways that end result is you're getting rid of uniforms.
And much of the dress code that went along with it.
And that's all the dress code that goes along with it. That's basically what you're saying. I don't care what your policy is, say it in words that people can understand so we can know what we're voting on, not like the last time when we thought we were voting on something. That's why we have all these questions, because the last time it was not what we thought we were voting on. I wanna vote on what is really going to happen, what's the end result of this vote? No pre-words, what's the end result?
The end result of the current vote before the board is to remove section three from the proposed policy. That's all.
Which is? Which is?
District school attire guidelines, all students pre-K through grade five, in addition to the guidelines outlined in section two above, the following guidelines shall be adhered to for students in grades pre-K through grade five during the regular instructional day. Evening events at, such as school-wide activities, shall still adhere to sections two above. A, all students must wear safe and comfortable bottoms in either solid or pattern, solid colors or patterned with no graphics, text or logos. B, all students must wear solid colored or patterned shirts with either long or short sleeves. C, additional layers such as sweaters, blazers, vests or sweatshirts are optional. Any such item must be solid or patterned without graphics, tests, texts or logos, with the exception of CSD and V related logos. D, backpacks and/or book bags are permitted but shall not obstruct safe passage in the classroom or in the corridors. E, each Friday shall be a district-wide designated dress down day for grades K, pre-K through grade five. On these days, school attire should still comply with section two of the policy. F, each school principal may periodically designate specific days or events, i.e., school picnic field day or spirit week, during which the guidelines specific to grades pre-K through grade five may be waived. Principals may also allow classroom teachers to use dress down days or themed days such as pajama day as class incentives or rewards.
Can you point me in the new policy where it says anything with regards to head coverings of any kind, including but not, these are things that are banned today. Can you just tell me where that is? Cause I'm struggling with that, my glasses and my hat.
It's not germane to the current motion before the board. I will gladly answer that question when it is in order.
Okay, my point, my question is, is that in the policy? It is not. In your new policy, that is not there. That is the question.
The question's out of order because it's not relevant to the current amendment.
So it's not in the current policy?
That's not what I said.
It's not, we're talking-
It's not in the amendment, not the amended policy.
Lord have mercy, okay, okay.
We're only talking about section three right now.
Okay.
Okay, so does everybody understand what we're voting?
No, cause you lost me about a few, I'm sorry. Listen, I think I was caught even before Annie Parker was. I appreciate the fact that you reread it. Honest to God, I'm not trying to stall the process.
All we're, all we're voting on right now is to strike section three.
But you're striking the part that takes uniforms away.
Yeah, so follow me, follow, follow, follow me. It took me a minute, I apologize, it did take me a minute. So right now, the only vote on the table is to have that policy with the amendment. Doesn't mean we have, we're, we're not passing the policy, we're passing the amendment.
Correct.
That is it. We're not passing the policy, we're passing the amendment. So you can vote yes or no, and then yes or no. Took me a minute to get there, but now I'm there.
Yeah, we're on a subsidiary motion, we're not on the main motion, which is why answering your question about head coverings, et cetera-
Was not germane, I get that part of it.
Right, was not germane to the conversation.
I get that part of it, but I'm saying is that you're still taking out the part with the uniform.
Yes, but that doesn't mean we have to pack, then, then, once we do that, you vote on that, then we have to vote on the policy itself. That's when it's a yes or a no and yeah. Whew, okay, I think I'm there.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment to the policy?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
I'm a no.
Wait, I'm a no.
Two noes. Could I actually ask for a roll?
Please.
Thank you.
Ms. Dawkins? I am voting yes, that we could amend this at this point.
Mr. Listrow?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
I'm gonna say no.
To no, okay.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders-Cowen?
No.
Ms. Santia?
No.
Dr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Mercier?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Three yes, four no.
What?
Six yes, three no.
That's not right either because we've got two people absent.
No, but Annie's here.
Oh, Annie's here, right.
Six yes, three no.
Yeah. Mr. Mercier?
So I would like to make a motion to amend section two B. So we're now in district-wide school attire guidelines and this is now pre-K through 12. B has to do with head coverings, et cetera. I would like to amend it to say, head coverings including hats, hoods, bandanas, scarves and other head coverings should not cover or obstruct the face. Exceptions will be made in the case of religious coverings. Except in the case of religious coverings, teachers may request that students remove their head coverings while in the teacher's classroom. So the language at the end is an, is an additional amendment.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second and sort of discussion.
Mr. Mercier?
Oh, sorry.
This is, this was an amendment that I put forward based on feedback from certain educators who feel strongly about allowing certain types of head attire and have very strong personal feelings on it. But also mediating and moderating that with teachers who feel the opposite. In committee, Ms., in committee, Dr. Sims talked about, in her personal experience, being penalized because in her classroom, she was fine with students who wanted to wear their sweatshirts, their hoods up, because it made them feel more comfortable in her classroom. And she was targeted, she was penalized by administrators because she was not enforcing dress code. I myself, as an educator, I've had students shy, whatever, perform better, be more willing to actually engage in music making and things if they can put their he, their hoods up. I've also had students who use hoods as a way for them to take a minute or take a break in a safe, non-threatening way. And it threw me for a long time. It took me a while to get used to that and allowing it, but I found that when I did and when I was more accommodating and willing to be flexible with students, that I had better rapport and my students had a better experience in my classroom. I also think Ms. Parker has, and others have brought up cultural and historic norms. And I think that is a very valid thing. And what this would allow is for teachers who have those strong feelings, that my mother's one of them. My mother hates when people wears, wear a hat indoors, even in their own home. She feels it is highly disrespectful. Teachers in that situation could have a personal conversation with their students. Talk about shared values, talk about differences, generational differences. And I think, I think in many cases, teachers who are willing to engage students like that and have a meaningful discussion, like I'm asking you to not wear a hat in my classroom because of these beliefs that I hold, and you should be able to adapt to different situations, I think that could be a powerful discussion for educators to have with their And I know that some people have possibly concerns about whether or not they should be allowed in the hall over safety concerns, things like that. I'd be happy to like hear additional amendments to address some of those concerns. But as far as in the classroom, I feel teachers should have the ability to work with their students as to whether or not they're okay or comfortable with hoods, hats, et cetera.
Dr. Sims? So the reason I didn't second this amendment and would not vote for it as is, is that I think it actually leaves too much leeway and, and makes the assumption that teachers are not biased and teachers are people and are biased because we all have biases of one sort or another. So not to be out of order, this is like hypothetical, I would, in an amendment like this, I would maybe say something like, if it is being a disruption to the classroom, teachers may request blah, blah, blah. Because in, even talking to my own kids, because I am also a parent in this district and, and have kids at the high school, my kid said, teachers aren't applying that fairly anyway. If you wear a baseball cap, they tell you to take it off. If you're wearing a beanie, it's okay and nobody bothers you. So it is already being applied with bias that I feel these things are okay, so I let them go and I don't think these are okay. And again, always the target is urban fashion. We're talking durags, we're talking hats. I understand that even people of color, you know, may- you know, may support that they don't want those things because of, you know, backgrounds and whatever they view as respect. But the reality is that targeting specific things that are urban fashion has racist undertones and beginnings. I have seen in districts where this is not a thing, like, people can wear whatever they want, and the world has not fallen apart. I think I gave the example, even when we had that meeting, where I've observed in New Britain, a situation escalate to death over a kid having a cellphone in the hallway, right, when none of us let go of our cellphones. And meanwhile, at Farmington High School, there are charging stations in the hallway for their convenience. This is not what suburban districts do to their students, how they treat them or the things they request of them. It isn't. It isn't. And so, again, what I do urge people to ask, I understand everyone has their backgrounds, their experiences, their beliefs, that is what we bring here. But what I hope people ask is, does this have an educational value? Or is it my bias and preference? That's, that's all I would say.
And I would like to say, I would like to say that those students living in Farmington and Avon do not have to deal with the fact that our urban students, who may wear the durags or the headgear, covers, are not black, most of them. And so, that's the first thing that people look at. The second thing is be aware of how many times you hear when you go for a job interview, and I've experienced this, people comment on how you look, how you dress. That can be used against our students. It's wonderful what they're doing in those other towns, but our students need to know when to wear certain things and when not to wear them. And we're not teaching that in school because it's not always taught at home. And school is about learning, not about how you look, what happened to your hair today. And the other thing is, I think that teachers need to be teaching, not arguing with the students about what they're wearing. And if they have a policy, it needs to be stuck to it. In life, in life, people have to deal with the fact that life is not fair. They're going to be treated differently no matter where they go. Our kids know that when they go out, how they should dress, meaning us as professionals. But not all parents are teaching that to their kids. Not all parents necessarily know that. And I don't think that we should be preparing kids that they wear out in the park. It's okay with everyone, and it's going to get them where they want to go in life, because it is not. It would be held against them. And durags are for night wear, not for school wear, not for day wear.
Thank you, Monica?
I was just going to agree what she said, and I'm one of those people, generationally. I, you know, I was in the school system in East Hartford, and I was one of those persons who would discourage my kids from wearing durags in the hallway, because I saw it having a very negative connotation. And I feel very strongly about it. It doesn't set a very good precedent for our students, certainly our students of color. Because what we have in this district is a very lackadaisical attitude about how students go into the school building. And it sets a stereotype for our kids of color. Now, people could say whatever they want, but the reality is, if we don't start to model a certain type of behavior and expectation for those kids because they don't necessarily come in the school with a standard, it's different for a person like Dr. Sims. She already, her kids have a role model and expectation of professionalism. They know when that's, it's okay, and they know when they can kind of be lax with it. Because there is a role in front of them that is professional. There's times when we're all lax, right? But there has to be some guidance, because we know as a reality that kids are taught much of what they know as far as social norms happen in the school system. Now, we're looking at where our standing is across the state. You know, you talk to other districts about what's happening in the city of New Britain. The expectation is not set high for us. And if we keep getting lax and lax and more lax, you know, it's going to be like, they can just do anything in New Britain. They do whatever, they go to school however. There is no expectation, there is no norm of how students should arrive at school, how they should look, how they should go forward. Because it's okay to be an athlete. But I don't want every child that's in this district to be treated as though that's the only thing that they can do well. They must learn how to have both standards. How to look professional, what that looks like. And when you go home, or if you're in the gym with your coach and it's okay to wear your durag, working out, that's a different thing. But I absolutely, I disagree with that being okay standard. And I agree with you with respect to this, Dr. Sims, that if you make it wavy, that some teachers say it's okay, and other teachers say it's not, then that's a mess too. Because then you'll find that those students only want to hang out with, you know, not trying to be funny, but if you were in the school system and you said this is okay, where do you think that student wants to keep going? They want to keep going to that classroom where there's no standard, where it's okay to do whatever they want to do. And I would explain to my kids when I was in the district, why this was important to me. You know, because those are the same things that we're dealing with with the Trayvon Martins, with the hoodies on. You know, and if people don't want to look at it that way, that's fine. But as for me, and my house, and the kids that I teach, and the kids that I mentor, I want them to understand why I feel so strongly about this. Because it's important that they start off and understand what professionalism looks like. Because when they go into corporate America, when they look for a job, when they go for interviews, you're not walking into any manager's office with your durag, taking it off when you get off the elevator. It's just not happening. And when we see it, we have our sidebar conversations about what that looks like. We can say we don't, but that's the truth. And so, when we say it's okay, then we're setting our kids up for failure. I just believe that. When you're in college, it's a whole different ballgame. Because you're paying the bill, nobody's going to care about what you look like. If that's what you want to do, that's fine. But still, when you go into that interview, there's an expectation of how you're going to look when you walk in the room.
I just want to point out that I would think that one of the most successful people in this room is Dr. Sims, who is also a woman of color, who is also a product of New Britain schools, and who often wears beautiful head coverings that does not diminish her professionalism. So I mean, some of that argument, I don't know that it makes sense when it comes to the child and what the child is capable of.
Mr. Mercier?
I wanted to touch on a few things that people have said, and I appreciate the passion that people bring to this issue. It was brought up that teachers shouldn't be arguing with students. I agree. And I think when you have, that was part of the reason of looking at our policy and asking ourselves the question of, does this really affect learning? Because when you have a dress code that teachers feel they are obligated to enforce, that students don't understand the reasoning behind, and teachers also don't understand the reasoning behind some of the things. Some of the things, you know, especially in this case. Right, there are teachers who don't have the same feelings. And when they're asked to enforce a rule that is very arbitrary, that sets teachers up for cases of argumentation. Other people talked about how we need to expect more of our students. We need to model proper etiquette. We need to model good behaviors. I think you do that with conversations and discussion. I don't think the board putting a policy in place that says, you can't, you can't wear XYZ, that doesn't really model anything for our students. It sets an expectation for school, but there's no conversation that necessarily has to take place as to why is the dress code that we can't wear hats in the building? Why are you asking me to take off my hoodie? Well, it's in the policy.
Look, you don't.
And I think that if we're talking about getting students prepared for interviews and things like that, those are excellent times to have conversations with students about, how do we dress for different events? That's actually one of the guiding sort of things behind this policy. And when we talked in committee, is about setting a policy that focuses on what is appropriate for the current activity in which you're engaging. Because what you're going to wear to a job interview is going to be different than what you wear working out in the gym. It's going to be different than what you're wearing at an athletic event, at a performance ensemble, or a play. Like, that's sort of the guiding view of this. And trying to make it so that it does reflect those things that we want in our students.
So, we have, okay, did you have? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, again, to some of the concerns, I think there's a lot that we agree on, and the biggest part is the discrimination. But to me, the problem is the discrimination, not the clothing. I've been discriminated against while wearing a suit and pearls, which is a reason I always talk about how I don't, I don't believe in respectability politics. I will dress like this when I feel like dressing like this. If I want to go to work with my ripped jeans and my pink tins, I do, and I do any job. I show up, I've been doing it, it has not diminished, because once I've proven myself to people, they need to stop worrying about what I'm wearing and what it does. So I think that piece is in common, but I think the approach that adding rules and then the punitive end that happens when you supposedly break those rules, as the teacher of any of these things we want to see, we're teaching kids, does the entire opposite. Like, being rough on kids because the world is going to be rough on you is not something I believe in. I think it's the exact opposite. Our black and brown kids need all the loving they need right now, because the world is going to be Trayvon Martin-ing them, and so on and so forth, so. Having those conversations, like Nick is saying, also, when I have seen people address dress code things, they're not doing it in this loving, let's pull to the side and have this conversation. That would be beautiful. That is something I did do with kids when I needed to about an issue. That's not what they're doing. They're going, give me that hat. You know you're not supposed to have that, and so on. And then, again, it escalates into something else that is extremely problematic to me that that is happening all the time in classrooms, and that it is targeted and disproportionate, like a lot of the stuff that we have been seeing. And if we think that somehow this leads to more success and better jobs and whatever, we've had this policy forever, right? How long have we had this policy? Has it led to, you know, more achievement, better outcomes in graduation? It has not. The only things that have addressed any of those things are targeted academic support, the counseling things that we're talking about, inter-year support. Those are the things that address exactly what we all want for kids. And I think that the mistake is thinking that these absolute surface things somehow have a lasting effect. If kids feel welcome in schools, if they see the value in school, in fact, when kids kind of dress down and don't care and whatever, it's because they don't see that as a space. A space that I value, I want to look fly for, whatever that looks like to me. And so, I, that, that is the big issue to me, is that the focus needs to be on building relationships, the actual concrete targeted things that help students achieve, and not surface things. We're not as far as that, but we know there has been time where this district was doing very punitive things for small dress code things, and it was detrimental. We know it was detrimental. There was a drop in all kinds of things, and it was problematic, and there had to be a pivot because of it. And so, even little steps in that direction are really scary to me, because I've seen the results.
Gail, and then Tina.
I just want to go back to, hold on, now I can't get to my numbers. I apologize, I had it and then I closed it. Right, so we talked about not putting our own, me, personal, I like uniforms. I like having the discipline of a uniform. I like, I like the way it looks. I like not having kids walking around with their hats, with their ass hanging out. I'm all about that. But, so did 55% of our parents that answered that survey, were for, to keep the uniforms. So, that's all I'm going to say for probably the rest of the night, because I think we should table this policy.
If we table the policy, then we're going back to the old policy, which means everybody's got to go out and buy uniforms this week.
Yep, but then I would put, I would make the motion to say remove item three, section three, which is the uniforms. Everything else stays, except for the uniforms.
Tina?
So, it was really just to the conversation that we are having right now. And I just think that we need to all take note of the simple fact that this all points of communication that we are having amongst opening it up past the committee, all of us here having the discussion, and all of us even bringing to the table this, in the spirit of collaboration, what are, you can call constituents, but what are people at church, at home, everywhere, on our Facebook, wherever, are actually bringing us now to the table as something that we needed to discuss. It's giving me, it's given me the opportunity, since the posting, to be, I guess, more cognizant of, hey, we should be discussing this, but we can't discuss it for a really quick moment, say, we're going to make a decision that impacts you economically, and then we'll just talk about it again later. That's just not fair. That's where the, that's where it's losing its fairness as, as something that we're discussing, as just a point of order. We're over here, we're discussing it. We already know that there are things that we need to further discuss, at least in our community forums, at least in our community chats amongst, I don't know, just get together and just say, hey, listen, we just realized now, your issue was with the durags, which isn't on my radar as much, and I'm sorry, just, it isn't as much, it's like my home. I'm an army brat, and I went to parochial school, so I'm totally okay with uniforms. I have it in my home, and that's fine. That's what I'm saying, like, we have the khaki pants, we've got the solid shirts, we're ready to go. Actually going out and spending money is going to be a lot, but we are finding out now. Thank you for at least bringing your points to the table, your points to the table, your points to, all of us.
We have more to discuss, we should not be voting on this today. Thank you for bringing your points to the table.
Just in the spirit of time, can I make a motion to extend, extend past 10?
We don't need to.
No, need to, that's, we got rid of that.
Yeah, that happened.
Beautiful. Beautiful. Let's go right now.
In anticipation, let's go.
All right.
Okay, so, to recap, we have a seconded motion.
Which is to amend section 2B to add the language at the end. Except in the case of religious coverings, teachers may request that students remove their head coverings while in the teacher's classroom.
Is there any, can we put this to a vote? Any further?
I just have a quick question about that. So, if we vote to vote this down, what happens then?
The language that is currently proposed is the language that, the language currently in the proposed policy reads, "Head coverings, including hats, cloths, bandanas, scarves, and other head coverings should not cover or obstruct the face. Exceptions will be made in the case of religious coverings."
And then, right after that, I'll make a different motion, Annie.
Okay, so, all in favor of this amendment, say aye. Okay. All opposed, say no.
No, no.
No. Okay. Any abstentions? The motion fails. You wanted to make another amendment?
I would like to make another amendment. I would like to, actually, I would like to make a motion to table.
To table the?
Father.
Yes. To motion to table this new policy.
Okay, so that means that we, okay, there's a second, okay. So.
Can I, can I tell you my intention? My intention is to ask to bring an item to the, to the agenda, to reinstate the policy that has been suspended, and then make a motion to get rid of section three about the uniforms. That's my intention. The point of order, I would leave that to Mr. Mercier.
There's a motion to table.
Okay, so there's a motion to table this proposal.
Yep, there's a seconded motion.
Seconded motion, discussion?
I am against this motion, I'll be voting no. I think the policy committee did a lot of work going through that policy and bringing forth recommendations to the board, and I don't think it is the most productive use of the board's time to just take that course of action.
I think what would have been just better overall is to put the same effort into asking our community in the form of a forum, and I get it, you want to ask them online, ask them online. But so many of our parents show up, show out, go to events. We can't just set up a table at the farmer's market and go, "Hey, what do you think about policy? Over here for a uniform." You guys spent, you put so much into it, then you went above and beyond and posted it for everybody in New Britain and everybody in the world to see. In all of that, nobody just sat down with any one of us who pay good money for school uniforms and have more kids than, you know, whatever, a handful, to be able to vote. Just ask them, just ask them. Set up a table, do whatever you need to, hey, during our community discussion, we're going to do this. We could have made a better use of our time doing that.
Gail?
I don't know if it was clear or what, but to next point. You guys did work extremely hard on this policy, right? It came before us, as soon as we saw it, like, the conversation started. The conversations of, "Let's have a special meeting, let's talk about this, let's do, let's do it." I, I cannot get behind this policy as it stands, only based on the feedback that I've received. I've received both, right, good and bad, but mostly bad. And that's the only reason why I'm saying is table this, you know, or a second read, for a second read, but then bring back the policy that 5130, that was in December 1st, 2014, and take away section three, which is the uniforms, which the majority of this board thought they were voting on to suppress was the uniforms only.
I would like, I would like.
Hang on a second, Annie, hang on.
We are in the middle of a global pandemic, which is why we surveyed the way we did and even paused to re-survey to get more information. If we went and set up at a farmer's market, that is one audience, one type of person versus out to everyone, multiple calls. I got calls at home from building principals and whoever reminding people to vote and do whatever. So, we took the steps that would be most inclusive in the middle of a global pandemic. Hold on, I had something else. Yeah, I, I have talked to a lot of people, I have heard people confirming what I believe, right? Because we all got elected by people who think like us. And so, that is the point. We're all here to represent today, and we likely all have people who think like us behind us going, "Yeah, you're right, great job." So that's why we make a motion, we second it, we vote, you're representing your people. I think that this narrative that somehow we're leaving out the community is untrue right now.
Nick?
Annie was, Annie was.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Annie.
And I say that there was a survey that was done, and 55% of the people said they would like to keep the uniforms. So we cannot do a survey and then totally disregard the response. And I know that you're saying you asked for more information, but if we went by the survey, it said they wanted to keep the uniforms. And the second thing, as hard as you all work, and I'm not taking anything from that, in order to put those uniforms in, the, the community, the whole community was involved, and it was not a one-night thing. It went on, and we had many meetings, and we had people from all different homes, children, backgrounds, and that those people voted that they wanted uniforms. So, I don't think that we can just say on one night decide that we're going to change it all. I think everyone should have a voice in this. And you're right, you weren't elected to represent groups, but half, thirty people, because it's only four people that knew we were not there. And we did not have the opportunity to say, "This is a whole board recommendation." It was a committee recommendation, and now we're having a discussion.
Okay, Nick?
That's all I have to say.
There have been a couple of things that have been repeated that I think are incorrect and inaccurate. One is that it was a one-night thing. This was discussed at multiple notice policy committees last year. We construct, we had the idea of, you know, going out and surveying. We discussed many times how to get that out. We looked at those survey results. We went back for additional information. We meant to, like, there was more than just one night. And I respectfully, out of the five people on the policy committee who had these conversations, and again, bipartisan committee, four of us have students in the district. So it's not like it's just people who don't have skin in the game making arbitrary decisions. This was a drawn-out deliberative process, and unfortunately, going out to the full committee, to the full community in the case that we may have done in a normal time, just wasn't feasible. But this has been something that's been on the radar for a while, ever since we suspended the policy and talked about revising it and bringing forward recommendations. It's, it's not a last-minute or sudden thing. Could we have done things differently or better? Perhaps. But I don't think that putting it off additionally is really going to overall change the position of the board. It's just going to create more potential uncertainty for our parents going into this school year.
Can I just check in? Did we vote down your amendment?
Yes.
Already, okay, so now we're on, I just need to like find my stuff right there.
We're on Gail's motion to table.
Motion to table, gotcha, okay.
So, what was the policy, I just have a question, just on, on my own question. So at the time that the kids went back to school, when my kids went back to school at the end of last school year, they had no policy, we already knew that, don't worry about the uniforms, just send them in whatever they've got in their closet, like, literally.
Right.
And that was fine. I didn't hear, I don't know, I didn't get a phone call saying.
Right, you had what, 30% of people in school?
Exactly.
Right. So was there an issue with uniforms? Probably not. But I think if you don't have something, you have to have something. Am I right?
Is there something?
You have to have something about what you wear to school.
Yep.
And that's what we're trying to figure out. What is that something?
But the, the something that was just kind of what opened ended at the last couple of months and you're like, you know, like the small, the minority of attendance, like actual people and bodies in the building, but the ones that showed up were able to kind of wear whatever.
I don't know. I, I don't know if there were issues, I'm not a.
Kind of hard to say when you have 20% of the kids in the building for this, and that, you know, I mean.
Happy to be here.
Right, right.
My mama wants me out of the house.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this proposal that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion about this? Let's dispense with this motion one way or the other.
Right.
Want to call the roll?
Ms. Dawkins?
I agree, yes.
Mr. Listrow?
No.
Ms. Parker?
Excuse me.
It's the motion to.
It's a motion to table, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I agree.
Ms. Reyes?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Sanders-Cowles?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Dr. Sims?
No.
Mr. Mercier?
No.
Mr. Gett?
No.
We just tie. We can't.
Yes, we got nine, yeah.
Ten. I can go back to math class.
If I guess or no?
Okay, so we have tabled this motion.
May I make a motion to add an item to the agenda?
Is that Jermaine at this point?
Yeah, we have no business with the board.
Okay.
Oh wait, no, we think we do have business after.
No, we have no, there's no current motion pending.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So.
All right, let's see if I get this right. I'd like, oh, did anybody second it?
You didn't make a motion.
You haven't made the motion yet, so.
Oh, I made the motion to add something to the agenda.
You have to, you have to say what you're adding.
Oh, 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 I didn't know that, okay. Um, I would like to reinstate policy 5132 dot 10, school attire with an amendment.
That's.
Damn, I can't do that. I was trying to, I was trying to skip a step.
It would be a motion to add the item, add the policy to the agenda.
Okay. Well, all right, okay. Making a motion to add policy 5132 10.
To Nina, okay. Annie is seconded. Okay, so now we have the policy, we, okay, now we need to vote on whether or not we're adding this to the policy. To the agenda, what am I saying?
Yes.
Sorry. It's late.
It is.
Is this debatable, or do we just?
We can just vote on it.
Okay. All in favor of adding this item to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. So now we have added this item to the agenda.
I would like to make an emotion to reinstate policy 5132 dot 10 that was suspended, I don't know the month and date, July 2020, July 2020, with an amendment. The amendment being removing item three, school uniform for students grades K through eight, leaving the rest intact.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Annie is seconded.
Motion to amend the amendment. Oh wait, no, sorry, we have, yep, motion to amend the, motion to amend the motion. And I would like to also strike section four.
Oh, no. Staff, the staff responsibility?
Sorry, it's a motion.
Sorry, is that what you're saying, the staff responsibility?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second on that.
I just want to make sure that I have this clear.
Yeah.
So we are reinstating 5132 point 10, but removing the uniform portion? Well, I mean, as you, that's your amendment, to remove the uniforms. And then you're removing the staff responsibility.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and your amendment?
Is to her motion, which has had a second.
Okay. And I am just trying to make sure that I am understanding what your amendment does. Is that, am I looking at the right thing? It's a staff responsibility?
Yep.
So, "School personnel, including substitutes, should serve as role models for proper attire in educational settings. School personnel should ensure that all students adhere to school attire policy as outlined in this, in further details in the parent handbook."
Issued at the start of the academic year.
I couldn't, I couldn't understand this paper well, and I couldn't understand what was being said, what was repeated.
Nick would like to amend my amendment.
No, amend your motion.
Amend my motion to add removing item four, which is staff responsibility. "School personnel, including substitutes, should serve as role models for proper attire in educational setting. School personnel should ensure that all students adhere to the school attire policy as outlined within the policy and further detailed in the student parent handbook issued at the start of each academic year." That needs a second.
It already has a second.
Has a second from Mrs. Dr. Sims.
Okay, I didn't hear it, sorry.
Discussion. Nick?
As I stated before, there's a reason that we took this out of our board policy, and it was, first off, it's not the appropriate place for the policy because it's dealing with staff. It should be, if you want to have a staff policy like that, it should be in the 4,000 series, not in a uniform policy for students. Additionally, this has been used in the past to punitively discipline teachers over running their classrooms in a friendly and inviting and responsive way to students.
If you strike four. Four, sorry.
Mr. Porter, order.
Yes.
This is an amendment or?
So now you have to pass both of, they have to agree to everything to pass my motion?
No, we're voting to amend your motion.
Oh, gotcha.
To include this. If this passes, then yes, the motion would include both elements.
But does she, does she have the staff on?
No, she does not.
In the book?
No, she does not.
So you're, so let me ask you this. Is that, is that intention of the teachers to be the ones who are the enforcers of what students wear? Or is it, you know what, I, teacher, should dress appropriately and dress for success and be a role model to these children? And also say, "Hey, Violet, you shouldn't wear, I don't know."
Your cut-up jeans.
Your cut-up jeans. Ooh, but that's not a good example because cut-up jeans, but even that, to me, cut-up jeans is not acceptable, but it's acceptable.
They did that for a while too. It didn't help anyone. I think Mr. Porter was there. I don't know if you're falling asleep yet.
So.
Did not lead to any success or positive things.
Right, so, removing four still, that does not change their dress code, number one. Is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Why can't we do those things separate? Because I don't see the.
Right, because then you're going to say we're going to need a motion. I would say, if we keep amending the amended, the amended, I'm going to say motion and just keep it done. Like, the policy is just reinstated.
There's the pending motion before the board.
Right.
Right, so.
All right, so you have it seconded, right?
We have a second on motion. Is there any further discussion on this, or are we ready to vote?
I would like to amend my motion back to the original motion of just.
You can't, you cannot go to a level speed.
Down his amendment.
And then I have to re-motion, and we could, okay, I got you.
No, you don't need to re-motion, your motion is there, go ahead.
You actually, it would be out of order to motion to amend something back to a previous state because, no, because that's a, because if you wanted to do that, you vote no on this amendment.
Right, so.
Because we're just voting.
Well, that's what's going to happen, right?
Make a little motion to your motion to take yours out?
Okay, we're getting out of control now.
So, if you, so Annie, just to, because it's late, if you don't like the motion, you vote against it.
Right.
If you're for the motion, you vote for it. Are we ready to vote? Any further discussion? Okay.
I still don't know if this is a problem. I don't, I don't understand how you can do this. So I'm going to have to look at Robert Williams' notes myself, but I, this just doesn't sound like it's, it makes sense. I'm sorry.
If you have an amended, you have a seconded amendment, you need to vote on the seconded amendment after discussion, and then you can proceed with the prior motion. So, all in favor of the motion to eliminate item four from the, from Gail's motion, then say aye.
So we're, so this, we're, sorry, we're voting on just item, removing item four?
Yes.
On amending your motion.
Yes.
We're voting on amending your motion.
So you're taking out though, removing the staff responsibility to be the dress code?
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so. Because we know this will be close, let's just. Because we know this will be closed, let's just do a roll call again.
Ms. Dawkins?
No.
Mr.? Mr. Listra?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
No.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders Connolly?
I don't know. Right, because I haven't had time to really digest what that really means. So I'm gonna say no.
Ms. Santiana?
No.
Dr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Mercier?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Five yes or no?
So now what?
So now that's.
Current motion that is before the board is to reinstate policy five one three two point one with the removal of section three and section four, that is what's currently before the board.
Reinstate three and four.
Okay, sorry.
Motion to amend the motion to remove section one, statement of policy, the New Britain Board of Education, uh, or, sorry, motion to amend the current motion, which is to reinstate policy five one three two point one, school attire, with the exclusions of sections three and four, to also have at the end of the motion, the exclusion of section one. Statement of policy.
I'd second that, because this is all about wearing uniforms.
Yep. Okay, so we have a second and motion, discussion on this one.
Good catch, Mr. Mercier.
Do you want to quickly summarize what this is doing, just so?
So all this is doing is amending Gail's motion to also strike section one, statement of policy, from the, um.
Right, saying that's mandatory.
Yeah.
Can I add to his motion, or we have to vote on his motion?
There's a second in motion.
Second in motion, so you can.
And because you had a main motion, actually, I think, yes, you can go like one more deep, but if it's a totally, it has to be limited to that section one.
Well, could, I, I would like to say anything in the policy that says uniforms?
Yeah, that would be a separate, that would be a separate thing.
Right. That's really it, it's just like you shouldn't wear, what you should and shouldn't wear.
Okay, so we have discussion on this item. Alright, seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Nick?
I, motion to amend Gail's motion to also read at the end, furthermore, to replace section, the section titled purpose, to strike the existing text and replace with the following text. The New Britain Board of Education has determined that reasonable expectations for school attire can further important educational interest by promoting safety in school communities and pride in the school. Furthermore, the Board of Education, in partnership with families, looks to create safe, engaging, and inclusive school environment.
Second.
Uh, the reason for this is much of the statement of purpose, as it currently stands, talks about uniforms, the text that's, um.
Yep. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
This is of the amendment still.
This is the amendment, yeah.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Nick?
I'm just going to abstain, uh, this is like getting, so we, very confusing.
Okay, so one, mark one abstention there.
No, I just abstain.
Okay, Nick?
Motion to amend the motion before the board to include at the end, additionally, section five voluntary school uniform for high school students, uh, sorry, uh, to strike section five voluntary school uniform for high school students grades nine through twelve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion to eliminate section five.
Can't imagine that, that would ever happen anyway. That's the school principal may institute a school uniform for high school students grades nine through twelve, provided that parents and staff are surveyed and indicate support for a school uniform, and further provided that the principal requests and obtains approval for a school uniform policy from the Board of Education.
Okay.
There's something he wants to prove.
Yeah, and we, we would still have to approve it.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion to eliminate section five. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Any abstentions, okay. Nick?
Motion to amend the motion before the board to add, in addition, the following section shall be added to the end of the policy, uh, with the appropriate numbering, titled periodic review of policy, and shall read, the board shall systematically review and revise or reaffirm this policy at minimum every three school years, beginning with the twenty four, twenty, uh, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. This review should include, to the extent possible, parent, student, and teacher input via surveys or focus groups. Nothing in this section shall be interpreted to preclude the board from reviewing the policy prior to the required school year.
Second.
We have a second and motion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Nick?
Motion to amend the motion before the board to, uh, read, furthermore, the board hereby directs the superintendent of schools to begin a process of reviewing the administrative procedure through parent focus groups and community engagement to bring recommendations for changes before the board.
So where are you?
He's adding.
I'm adding something to your, I'm adding it to your motion, it's not actually adding any text to the policy.
Oh, you're adding that? That's from your, the updated policy.
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's, it's just basic, because we are basically putting off and leaving the administrative procedure as is, which actually can be changed without necessarily board approval, but it's directing the superintendent to start going out and surveying parents and getting feedback on those issues that many people have said we didn't get enough feedback on. So it's directing the superintendent to continue pursuing this, okay.
Alright, we have a second and motion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have a one no. Alright.
I don't think we need a policy to ask the superintendent to do a survey, but that's.
It's not a policy, that's not.
That's part of the policy.
No, because your motion is to re, so the motion that we've crafted, you made a motion to reinstate the policy with removing section three.
Correct.
I then amended your motion multiple times to remove or replace other sections.
Correct.
Okay, so that's all part of the motion, and the things that say to amend or do this, this last section is not an amendment to the policy, this is just adding to your motion that we are also tell, directing the superintendent to go do this, it's not adding it into the policy.
Okay.
Is she responsible for doing that without us putting it into the policy?
It's.
Is that part of her job?
So that, he's amending a motion, he's not amending. Annie is proposing an amendment to a motion, not an amendment to the policy.
I understand that, I'm just asking you a question, like, is that part of her job? If we ask her to do a survey, will she have to do it?
It's a formal way of asking her to do a survey.
It, it's technically only part of her job if we vote on asking her to do it. Like, otherwise, it's within her right to do it, but the board can make a, it's happened, may, like, it's common practice for the board to direct a staff person to do something that the board feels strongly about. So, for example, a committee chair might take a vote at their committee to ask a staff liaison of that committee to prepare a report for the committee. So it's similar to that, the board can take motions or make motions to give direction to the superintendent.
I'm just trying to figure out if we will have to go through the whole policy, info and everything, that's the concern, but go ahead.
Okay, so, we have a motion, do we get a second?
We voted.
We voted, there was two people, three people who voted.
Okay.
So technically passes.
Okay, so it's passed. Alright, so, are there any more amendments?
Let me, give me one moment, sorry. I'm good.
Okay. So, we have a motion that has been seconded and amended repeatedly. So any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Okay.
I think she's frozen out, I thought she was frozen.
If she doesn't speak, if someone doesn't say a vote, it's just an abstention.
Oh no, she's there, I thought she was frozen.
What? I say yes.
Okay.
You're voting yes, or you're abstaining? Voting yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries then. So, summarize what we just did, so that the people up there who are glued to their, uh, Facebook Live, watching.
To summarize what we just did, our new policy, oh, man, okay, so the new policy as amended, and I'm just gonna focus on the policy, because that's one page, and that's what the board, you know, votes on, controls this policy. The new policy as amended will read, uh, section one, purpose. The New Britain, uh, the New Britain Board of Education has determined that reasonable expectations for school attire can further important educational interest by promoting safety in school communities and pride in the school. Furthermore, the Board of Education, in partnership with families, looks to create safe, engaging, and inclusive school environment. And then it would go on to read, um, the next section would be clothing assistance, it would say, it is the policy of the Board of Education that no student be denied an education due to a bona fide financial inability to obtain clothing that complies with the board's attire policy. It would be followed by a section that says, sorry, I'm looking for it, um, periodic review of policy. The board shall systematically review and revise or reaffirm this policy at minimum every three school years, beginning with the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. This review should include, to the extent possible, parent, student, and teacher input via survey or focus group. Nothing in this section shall be interpreted to preclude the board from reviewing the policy prior to the required school year. So that is the policy page now. And then the board furthermore, furthermore with promotion, directed the superintendent to conduct a review of the administrative procedures with parent input and bring recommendations and such to the board.
And so the, uh, shorthand version of that is that parents do not need to rush out and buy a particular uniform this year.
And they can have logos on their shirts.
Yep.
Okay, do we have any further?
We have a agenda.
Yeah, we still have an agenda.
We still have a agenda.
Yeah, we don't want them.
What do we still have?
Personnel, Annie, do you wanna, I don't know if she could see the agenda.
It didn't, it didn't go through committee anyway.
Okay, so they're accepting a personnel transaction?
No, we did approve a new job description and new position request for one FTE motion, uh, transportation facilitator for NBEAC.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? Go ahead.
Just a quick question as to the need for the additional.
Additional position. Okay. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Because a pool revised job disruption for facility for equity and climate specialists is to why.
Okay.
Second.
Yep, good. Go ahead.
Uh, so what happened was, you may recall the end of the school year, we wanted to widen the pool of candidates, so we made sure that Mr. Wallace and any of them doing that was open to non-certified staff members as well, but we actually were able to find the candidate who was a certi, is a certified educator. So in order to align, um, with the candidate of choice, we are going to bring him back to a certified teaching position. So just to remind the board, we did that to open the pool up because of the, um, BDEI skill set that we were looking for, and we did happen finding a qualified candidate who is the certified senior educator and trained in, um, the other. So that's why we're bringing him back to a certified teaching position.
Gail?
My only comment would be the union affiliation, because it's, it's grant funded, right? From what I understand, it's still kind of like a in the works type of role, and it was not, it was not part of the union before, correct?
It was part of the union, um, it was originally brought in, a certified teacher position. And then at the end of the school year, because we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of candidates to, um, to look at as far as the, and so we came to the board and asked it to be non-certified. So it all, it was, its original intent was to make it similar to Mr. Escobar's position, where it was a specialist position, as a teacher, teacher leader, instead of gates, the person will work what fellow works in our office with Dr. Sanders.
Just because it says add, that's an add.
Yeah, so like an add back.
Yes, I understand.
Alright. I should have done my homework, I just, I'm gonna.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Oh, sorry.
I, I'm on your left side, you don't know this, it's okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I personally, I think I'd almost rather have it be kept wider if, in the case that this person leaves or something happens, if we feel like a job can be done with a wider range of candidates effectively, having that job description doesn't preclude us from looking narrower, but I, I sometimes worry when we start to tailor and retailer job descriptions. You know, that's just a concern I have, but I can understand why in this case. Yeah, that's just a concern I have, but I can understand why in this case.
Action.
I prefer it going back to the original. Some of the concerns I had that, you know, that first day when it changed was how some of the duties aligned specifically to instruction and, you know, I do both DEI work and teaching and whatever, and when you're doing a job that combines both of those, it's really hard for me to wrap my head around how you can do one without the other. So that was actually a concern for me when it changed, then, you know, whatever, the parameters were the parameters and the hiring difficulty was what it was and we had that conversation. But I think this is the right move for, I don't think we should open it because the right skill set is to have a certified teacher in this, in this role.
You could have, see, I might disagree with you because you could have somebody who came from corporate America, who is not a teacher, who was a trainer, that could probably come in and do this position. Right, we've had corporate diversity and inclusion and equity that.
But not aligned to instruction, they have really specific duties that have to do with instruction and in any case that, definitely to my experience, you know, in the reform movement, that has happened where people from corporate America are brought in to be administrators and to be all kinds of things and they don't last and it doesn't work and it always has negative effects because people who don't understand pedagogy and think that schools are corporate settings, which they are not and that the same strategies apply, they don't because we can't throw away our kids like we throw away a product that comes out with a negative quality.
Don't, you can run it like a business.
And such, you can't because it just doesn't align for the most part. It has been very detrimental when corporate ideals are applied to education settings without that wide view and understanding of, of pedagogy.
Okay, so we have a seconded motion to return, to approve this job description. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Two noes.
Three noes.
Any abstentions?
Is there someone else?
Three noes, okay, so Tina, so there are three. Three noes and the rest are yeses. Okay. Onto information sharing? Look at page 58.
Right, because that. If you don't vote on that.
Go ahead, Nick.
I would like to just comment on the information sharing because a lot of times people make a big deal about what is approved with some authority, but going through the list, I saw a lot of things that I think make a lot of sense and I didn't really see anything in there that I think if it came before the board, the board would have said no to. It's all in alignment with our vision, it's all in alignment with the work that we've been doing. So I appreciate the report and I'm glad to see all those items listed out there.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye.